P. M. Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will start the Special Community Development Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hayes. Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
We have a call. Audience time. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on anything on the agenda? Item three, public hearing on the annexation of three six nine five five North Northern Avenue. I'm going to call to order the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner.
Second.
By Alderman Donenworth. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Let me try that again, if you don't mind repeating. Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye. Motion carried. We're going to open item B, public hearing regarding the annexation of three six nine five five North Northern Avenue. Did you want to speak regarding the annexation? You can.
I'm not. This is just the public hearing portion, so we're hearing from anybody who wants to comment on it. We'll have the action item on the agenda in a few minutes, or depending on how long the public hearing portion goes. But if you want to just make a public statement, you're welcome to.
Can you state your first and last name, please?
Mike Adelman.
Is that all? Is the red light on? I don't believe it is.
Now it is.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike Adelman.
Okay.
I represent Antonio and Anna Rialo, who bought the property at thirty-six nine fifty-five Northern Avenue the tail end of two thousand and twenty. And they discovered at closing, at the very last minute, that there was a failed septic system. So the seller put into escrow funds that were estimated to be substantial to rebuild the septic system and the well, the septic system. And they closed. The deed was recorded February of twenty-one. And during the course of two thousand and twenty-one, as they pursued rebuilding the septic system, it was revealed that Lake County Health Department wouldn't approve it because the property didn't meet the current up-to-date code requirements for a septic system. And they turned to me at the end of that year to help them try and do an annexation into Waukegan so that they could connect to municipal water and sanitary sewer. So I've been working with Newell throughout two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three to annex the property. It's a single-family lot. It's contiguous to the northern city limits of Waukegan. There's water and sewer just kitty corner to the southeast corner of this property, terminating in Tyler Avenue. And it's a pretty straightforward process to connect to water and sewer once the annexation is approved and completed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Being none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian. You're not on this committee. Second by Alderman Donenworth. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye. Motion carried. The public hearing is closed. Now we'll go to new business, item five. Item A, ordinance approving the annexation of three six nine five five North Northern Avenue and authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian. Second by Alderman Turner. The planning and zoning department has received an annexation and map amendment application from Antonio Rialo to annex into the city and rezone the property at three six nine nine, three six nine, three six nine nine five? It's different. Okay, it's different, okay. Three six nine five five, North Northern Avenue, to R two, single-family residence. The property is improved with a single-family home that is part of unincorporated Lake County with R one zoning. The property owners wish to annex into the city of Waukegan and connect to city utilities. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye. Motion carried. Item B, ordinance approving zoning calendar two seven five, two seven two five, map amendment from C.R., Conservation, Recreation, Agriculture, to R two, Single Family District at three six nine five five North Northern Avenue. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian. Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth. Are there any questions to this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye. Motion carried. Item C, ordinance amending section eleven dot three dot four of the sign ordinance regarding authorized and prohibited sign variations. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian.
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth. Okay, this amendment removes the limitations on the ability to request variances for total signage permitted on a lot in the Western Gateway Overlay District, which is Fountain Square. The unique nature of Fountain Square is such that many properties have frontage on more than one street and are laid out differently than parcels in other areas of Waukegan. This amendment simply allows for the submission of variance applications that are beyond the limitations of variance requested in other areas of Waukegan. Each variance application would still be reviewed individually. This does not grant automatic approval for request. Are there any questions to this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye. Motion carried. Item six, reports and communication information, being none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Turner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are adjourned at five oh nine P. M. Thank you.
Five thirty P M. We will start the Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, five thirty P M. Finance and Purchasing Committee. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present. We have a quorum. Can I get a motion? Item C. Approval of the minutes from August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
I so move.
Alderman Bolton. Second by Alderman Florian. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D. Public comment. Is there anyone that wants to speak on any item on the agenda? You can go to the podium, give your name, sir.
Good evening. Braylon Edelman. You know, I got a concern. I'm seeing three purchases of a two thousand and twenty-three Ford Explorer. I mean, are we buying these vehicles to look good? Because this is ridiculous that we're spending this much money on these vehicles like there's not enough city vehicles. With all of the things that's going on in the city, with all of the things that we need help with, we've got to spend all this money on three brand-new trucks. I mean, for a minute, I thought we was hiring for the governor's detail. I mean, we got to really think about how we are spending this money. Like, seriously. Our police department is still struggling. They still need help out there, just in case anybody didn't know. The violence is at an all-time high. And you mean to tell me we have no other place to put this money to? Because if we don't, I could think of one very important. These kids need something to do and somewhere to go. So maybe we could take a couple of these trucks and take that money and give it to the kids. That'd be a beautiful thing. Just need you guys to really think about this, all this money that we spending on these Ford Explorers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Public comment? All right, we'll move on to item A. New business ordinance adopting a second amendment to the annual budget and a supplemental appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian.
A second.
Second by Alderman Bolton. The annual budget and appropriation ordinance for the City of Waukegan for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-three includes anticipated revenues and expenditures provided by a co-responder grant. The co-responder grant provides funding for a joint response by law enforcement officers and licensed social workers in response to mental health emergencies. The budget was initially created anticipating three sworn law enforcement officers through normal personnel funding and three professional social workers funded on a contractual basis. It has since been determined that it is in the best interest, best for workflow, accountability, and supervisory channels for the social workers to be duly qualified employees of the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Department. It has also since been determined that a uniform supervisory officer be assigned to direct the affairs of this new division. For this reason, it has been necessary to reallocate funding from contractual services to personnel salaries and benefits and to increase the appropriation for vehicles by one hundred and five thousand dollars to provide for five fully accessorized police vehicles. Are there any questions? Alderman Florian.
I don't know who's going to answer. You?
Or what is your question?
So, does the grant cover all of this?
One hundred percent of it, yes.
Okay. And for how long?
So the grant is given to us for one year. So it's been on, this is the second year that, for the first year, it took a while for the state to get the program up and moving. They've extended it a second year. So we are not sure how long, but we believe it'll be extended for a few years at least.
And we already have the social workers hired?
We do not, no.
Okay. So we want a supervisor for this unit. So that's over and above what you asked for originally, right? Where they're going to be just three social workers added and then we're going to use our officers we already had to pair with them, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So now we were putting in a fourth person as a supervisor.
Correct.
And he'll only be supervising these five people.
That's correct.
Okay. And then what happens if we don't get the grant next year, then? Do we have to fire all these people?
No, because they're going to become city employees. So if we're going to train, so we are going to spend a lot of money because we do have a very large sum amount on this grant, we're going to train them to be part of this, part of our response team in the City of Waukegan when we go to calls. And if we spend all this time and money in them, and once they're up and running and we have this unit now answering calls on the street, and then all of a sudden the grant goes away, then we have these professionals that we've trained that we are going to lose out on because someone else is going to gain all that training and experience. In the City of Waukegan, we've gone out to numerous other cities to speak with them about the programs that they have. And every city that we've talked to has increased their numbers, not decreased them. And in this city, we do have a great need for that. We spend a lot of time on our mental health calls, a lot of time. And that's where this program, these officers, this trained staff is going to focus on.
Don't get me wrong, I totally support this program, but when Deputy Chief Chastain first came to us when we accepted this grant, he explained that he already had the three social workers in mind of who he was going to hire, and that still hasn't happened.
No, that has not happened because there is a process to get them hired. So we are finally at that step where the job descriptions have gone out. So now we're just waiting for replies for that, for those positions. We're going to start to interview people.
Okay. So the three he had in mind didn't work out?
Well, no, we still have people in mind, but we just, we have to give everyone an equal opportunity that's interested in the position.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Should we not get this grant next year? Do you have any idea how much? How much are we talking about starting these social workers with? Will we have to absorb that into your budget?
We would have to absorb it into the budget, but for us, it's going to be a big benefit. It truly will, because again, when we look at our call volume, and our call volume is based on the amount of calls that we get when it comes to mental health and the amount of time that officers spend on those calls. We're trying to wreck more time and energy, especially in our violent calls in the community, where now they could focus on these calls that consume most of the time when our officers are out dealing with these type of calls. And that's, whether it's a crisis in the home, dealing with domestic violence, dealing with drug overdoses, dealing with homelessness issues, those kinds of things.
So are we looking to expand on this grant next year? Are we looking, is there anyone looking to keep this, keep getting this grant?
Yeah, we are. We absolutely are. That's one of our priorities. We are on top of it. We're going to make sure that every year we apply. We're very hopeful. It's looking hopeful for us, but we just can't predict when the state makes those changes. But I think this is going to be very beneficial, and if we have to consume it within our budget, I believe that it'll be well worth it because of the job that we're expecting to come out of this unit.
Okay. Any more questions? Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I really appreciate the fact we're getting social workers because we know our officers can't do everything, be position of authority, and do social work. And I know our constituents have made, mentioned, we need social workers. So I've been working in social work myself. I do understand. But also, I understand not only this grant covers social workers, but I understand also will cover the vehicles?
Yes. One hundred percent of the cost of the vehicles.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye. Motion carried. Item B. Or ordinance adopting a second amendment to the annual budget and a supplemental appropriation ordinance for fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a motion on the floor? I so move. Motion by Alderman Bolton. Second. I'll second. Second by Alderman Florian. On April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Waukegan approved the ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash four seven entitled Annual Appropriation Ordinance and the Annual Budget for the City of Waukegan for the Fiscal Year May, beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-two. And ordinance twenty-two dash zero dash four seven was later amended on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two by ordinance number twenty-two dash zero dash one four six to provide for revenues and expenditures within an Illinois Youth Employment Grant and an Illinois Violence Prevention Grant for a transfer of six million from the General Fund to the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund and for certain expenditures totaling two million in the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund. We now find it to be in the best interest of the city to amend ordinance twenty-two dash zero dash four seven and the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-two even further to recognize revenues sufficiently greater than anticipated in the General Fund. Home room sales tax fund, gaming tax fund, and the water sewer utility enterprise fund, as well as an additional transfer of four million from the General Fund to the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund and the receipt of same by the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund and its expenditures in the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund made possible by the transfer of funds from the General Fund per attachment. from the general fund per attachment. Did you wanna speak to that?
Sure, I can. This is a very positive amendment as we close out fiscal year twenty-three. We still have an opportunity to recognize revenues that came in far in excess of what we initially anticipated, which in a general fund allowed us to transfer an additional four million dollars to the fixed asset replacement fund for a total of ten million dollars that went from general fund to fixed assets for replacement of vehicles and equipment for police, fire, public works. We're increasing our, uh, this amendment increases general fund revenues by twelve point seven million dollars over and above what we had anticipated. Home room sales tax, we're mending that projection by five hundred thousand. The gaming tax fund wasn't initially budgeted because uh, we didn't start receiving money in the gaming tax fund until uh, March of twenty-three, so we wanna recognize what we had collected. Uh, and that's about six hundred eighteen thousand. In the fixed asset replacement fund, we wanna recognize the ten million dollar transfer from the general fund. And we wanna recognize what we spent that money on. And uh, we spent it on uh, certain lease payments, fire vehicles, public works vehicles, administration vehicles, facility improvements, money for the animal shelter, fire department facility improvements, office furniture. Uh, so we wanna recognize the use of the additional revenue in the fixed asset fund. And finally, in the water sewer fund, we didn't budget interest earnings, cause I didn't wanna use the interest earnings uh, as part of our expenditure base. But interest earnings came in at one million dollars in the water sewer fund, we wanna recognize that. So it's all very positive, it's an increase in, in revenues and no additional expenditures. Just a transfer of funds to the fixed asset fund.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to thank Don and the city staff who have watched the money very closely over the last couple of years now, and I'm so grateful we have this fixed asset replacement fund, which I don't know if Waukegan has ever had. I don't know, maybe someone who's been here a lot longer than me can answer that, but in the past, when we've needed an ambulance, we had to borrow the money. When we needed a snowplow, we had to borrow the money. And with this money, in this fund, it's kind of like thinking of it as a savings account in your own home, we can actually buy these things when we need them without paying interest on them. This is huge. This is really huge for us. And to be able to say we're putting more money in this fund from last year is amazing. So I just want people to understand, I know Don tries to explain things in the simplest terms possible, but this couldn't be better, I think, from the news you're giving us, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes, I'm sorry. Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item C, resolution authorizing the procurement of paper and office supplies for fiscal year twenty twenty-four from Office Plus Solutions and Supplies Warehouse Direct through Omnia Partners Joint Purchasing Contract in the not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Florian? Staff recommends that members of the Finance and Purchasing Committee authorize the mayor to adopt a resolution authorizing the procurement of paper and office supplies for fiscal year twenty twenty-four from Office Plus Solution and Supplies Warehouse Direct through Omnia Partners Joint Purchasing Contract in the not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Are there any questions to this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item D, um, resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four-five-eight subsection I seven, good faith waiver and approving the purchase of twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer from Curry Motors in the amount not to exceed forty thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Can I get a motion? So moved. Motion by Alderman Bolton? Second. Second by Alderman Florian? I have a question, this is for, um, these are going for the police department? Yep, 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 yep.
It says the next two are going to the police department, this doesn't specify. That was my question also.
It's going to the police department, this part of ten, ten that the, um, vehicles they purchased this year. Is there anybody from the police department here? Chief left? I know that they've talked about waiving the bidding process, but the next three they're waiving, and, and I, I don't think we need to keep waiving.
The problem with vehicles is they're so hard to get right now.
But will we be able to get them from another dealership, maybe cheaper?
I totally agree with Alderman Newsome. We need to stop waiving these, uh...
I know that they're saying it's difficult to get them, but somebody would be willing to work with the city if they wanted the purchase that, that could possibly come in lower than forty thousand for... Hi, chief, I'm, I'm, um, item C, item D on the Ford Explorer. The first one is the forty thousand two sixty-three, and I know we have three that we're purchasing.
Yes.
And uh, I know that you want to waive the competitive bidding process. I know we've been doing that a lot, and I know, I, I understand because it's been so difficult since COVID, getting vehicles and stuff. But did we go out and check any other dealerships?
Ma'am, we have been checking everything, every place, everywhere. Um, Ford hasn't even opened up the bidding process for, for, for the state yet to order Explorers. This is, these are the only cars we've been, been able to find, and uh, normally we wouldn't even order those colors, or not, you know, our standard color is black, but we're taking anything that we could locate. We haven't been able to locate any vehicles besides these, and we've been looking for some time.
Okay. Uh, the, I, I know we have three on, um, here.
Yes.
For, um, are the, any of these vehicles gonna be going for the co-responder?
Yes, one vehicle is going to the co-responder grant. I believe one, one was budgeted for, and then the third one is from, uh, from insurance, from risk management, through risk management's budget.
And it's gonna be used for?
Uh, two of them are gonna, one, one will go to uh, patrol, uh, one is going to the co-responder program, and then the third one is going to investigations.
Okay, alright. Um, I know we have a motion on the floor, I'm gonna read this into the... Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Actually, I got a question before you...
Question, uh, Alderman Guzman?
Okay, so buying new vehicles, the moment they leave the lot, they drop such a price, so why get a twenty-three, why not a twenty-two or twenty-one?
There aren't none available.
Oh, they're absolutely none?
There's absolutely zero vehicles available. None.
Okay.
We're having an extremely hard time finding any vehicles at all. And normally, we would go through the state, uh, process, but it's still not open. Because Ford isn't, Ford has not opened that process up, and it's probably gonna be delayed even further now, uh, because of the strike.
Because of what?
The strike.
Oh, they have?
The Ford, uh, GM, yeah, Ford GM and Stellantis, all the three major, uh, car manufacturers have, um, are on strike.
With the prices that they're charging on these cars, and they wanna strike?
Cause they wanna... Have we thought about going to electric yet?
Uh, we have not looked into that, no. Uh, we'd have to talk to our maintenance department, uh, to see what, uh, just the cost containment for all our, uh, vehicles, how well they would work. There's, there aren't, were many agencies out there that are doing it. Uh, we don't have any experience with it yet, there's a lot of things we'd have to change. So that's, that's kinda where we're at today.
I can speak a little bit to that as well, that's an infrastructure issue. The city would probably have to do, um, a study to see how much it would cost to turn the fleet electric and to provide the infrastructure to charge the vehicles and maintain them before they could even start to turn over, um, the gas vehicles, because there, there's a whole expense and infrastructure issue with that as well, but I think it's something that I think some municipalities are looking, looking at.
We run many of our vehicles around the clock, they're twelve-hour shifts. Um, just charging times would be difficult as well.
What is the mileage you guys use a day?
Oh, it, it, it does vary.
It doesn't go over four hundred, right?
Oh, no, no, not at all, not at all.
So electric vehicle is feasible on the mileage?
Uh, mileage-wise, yes, in the wintertime it may be different.
Okay.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, um, I understand that we can get these same type of vehicles and models for a little cheaper rate. Uh, can you explain how it has been approached?
Yes, that, that's done through, uh, the state bidding process, so once the state opens up, um, they select a dealer that you go to, and you get the state rate. Um, once you start placing your orders, they open it up once a year, and it, it still has not been opened up for twenty twenty-three.
And isn't that because the dealers don't, they won't do that? They won't agree to that, because they're, they're able to charge more because there's not enough vehicles out there?
Correct, so Ford, Ford will make a lot more money selling it to the dealership so they could put it on the lot than to the government. To any government. No, it's not just us, it's every single city having the same issue. We're all competing for the same few vehicles we could find.
Any other vehicle, uh, feasible for our, our usage? Besides those Explorers?
Um, there are, but what we get with the Explorers is every, is, is the package that goes along with it, so you have to be able to convert the rear seats to transport prisoners.
Yes. So there's no other vehicle that accommodates that?
Unfortunately, there are very few, there are very few. Um, Chevy Tahoe is one of them, um, and the Chevy Tahos...
Too expensive.
Correct. Uh, the, the Dodge has some vehicles, the Dodge Durangos, we've tried looking into them, but we still haven't been able to find those vehicles as well. Uh, parts, the constraints are higher on those vehicles when it comes to converting them into police units. The cheapest route for us is the Ford Explorer.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Uh, this purchase will be made through Curry Motors, which is, uh, current city of Waukegan vendor for vehicle purchases. Curry Motors is an authorized state bid agent in which we have purchased squad cars before. The price for the vehicle is forty thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, which was discounted to us from forty-six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, saving six thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. This vehicle is available now for us and needed to replenish, uh, the unit's fleet. Um, can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item E, uh, resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four-five-eight subsection I seven, good faith waiver and approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford Inter- Interceptor Utility from Curry Motors in the amount not to exceed forty thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Can I get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, I mean Alderman Florian, second?
All, aye.
Second by Alderman Bolton. Same as, um, item D, any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item F, resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four-five-eight subsection I seven, good faith waiver and approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer Police Interceptor from Curry Motors in amount not to exceed forty-one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Can I get a motion on the floor?
I still move. Second.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Florian? Are there any questions to this motion?
I do.
Alderman, uh, Guzman?
Wa- uh, chief? Why are there three different prices for the same vehicle? And each one keeps on increasing?
Yes, so, some of these vehicles have different options in them. That's why there's the pricing is, is a bit different on each one. These vehicles, we did not order, when we're able to order them from the factory, they're all equipped exactly the same way. These were not, we could not order from the factory. So we're trying to find vehicles that are available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It doesn't have a TV or anything in there, right? Or any sunroof or anything?
No, sir, they do that.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Uh, item G, resolution approving amendments to the city of Waukegan's grant policy. Can I get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian? Second? I second. Second by Alderman Bolton? Uh, staff recommends that the members of the Finance and Purchasing Committee authorize the mayor to authorize a resolution approving amendments to the city of Waukegan's grant policy. Uh, this policy... Is there anyone here that wanted to speak about this?
I can, I can speak to it a little bit, um, as I worked on it, Miss Large is also here. Um, essentially what this is doing is the grant policy, um, was a little outdated, um, it's cleaning up some language. But most of all, um, one of the things that's unusual about Waukegan, um, that our office noticed, is that, uh, staff bring a resolution as an agenda item to even apply to a grant, and then they come back once they are able to get the grants, and then they might come back again. And so what this would do is say, unless you're creating a liability for the city, unless it's gonna, um, cause a match, the city will have to throw in funds, unless it will require hiring of staff. Um, and then there's a fourth component to it, that unless it's going to, um, uh... Approval of the city? Approve, it needs approval, because the grant needs approval, then it won't have to come to council for, for initial approval, um, or for an acceptance. Because if, if the city's just getting money, let's say a, a grant just says we're gonna dump a hundred thousand dollars off with, with the city department to do whatever, no match, no liability required, then it's kind of silly for it to come before council because it's money coming in.
Are there any questions? Being done, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item H, resolution improvement, approving amendments to the city of Waukegan's purchasing policy. Can I get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian? Second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Bolton? Are there any questions to this motion?
What is it about?
In the...
I, I can speak to this a little bit. Um, again, this was something that staff had asked our office to look into. Um, the purchasing policy, by understanding, had not been revisited for many years. Um, one of the things, again, that's unusual about the purchasing policy that's created some confusion even among staff, is when is it required to have to seek council approval for contracts or, um, spending, um, pursuant to purchasing? And so, the Waukegan municipal code says for purchases under twenty-five thousand dollars and under, the mayor has authority to do that. The confusion arises when vendor A, whoever vendor A is, um, receives a contract from the city to do, you know, project A. And that project may be fifteen thousand. So the mayor can approve that without having to come to council, because that's what the code says, and that's, that's very typical of municipalities. Um, it's to create efficiency. The issue is when that same vendor is awarded a different project regardless of the amount, in a, in a different contract completely, but it's still under twenty-five thousand, staff have been bringing it back to council. So essentially, what you don't have is one vendor, you technically have a vendor receiving more than twenty-five thousand from the city in a year, but not for the same project, for different projects. So again, it's unusual to see, um, such approvals coming through the council, what it does is, you know, you're getting these one-off or approve a resolution for vendor A for a thousand dollars. or five thousand dollars for small projects when it had nothing to do with the, the first contract that they were hired for. So, what the purchasing poly, would, policy would be amended to is basically saying that unless it's for the same contract and it's going to exceed twenty-five thousand, um, that comes to council. If it's not gonna exceed twenty-five thousand and it's for different contracts, then it would not have to come to council at that point. Additionally, there's some cleanup language again in the policy. And one of the things I think we, we added that is going to be helpful is a policy against stringing. So, where you have these shell corporations try to come in and, and pretend like they're different contractors for the purpose of receiving, um, an award. Staff has been really looking at that when they have, what are suspicious bidders and they're saying, wait a minute, this looks like something we received on the same bid from somebody else, but it's really the same person using multiple different, um, LLC names to try to, try to get the bid. Um, so instead of having four different contractors, you're, you're having really the same contractor bid for four times for the same thing under different names. So, there's a policy now against that officially and, um, it specifically states that when you're doing change orders, that will increase the purchase price, especially of a public works contract, fifty percent or more, that that has to be rebid because that's actually the statwa.
Uh, I had a question regarding that, um, and I, I, I was here before the policy was changed to the twenty-five thousand and it was because, um, different departments were using the same vendor and those contracts were, you know, A didn't know what B was doing and that B hired the same contractor. So, uh, my question is, I hope we have safeguards in place that that doesn't happen. And then also, I know according to the ordinance, uh, it was, uh, five percent, I mean, five percent less. The price was five percent less than, or whatever, and we raised it to fifty. Why not twenty-five percent over the contract, not fifty percent more than the original contract?
To your first point, um, I, I think we've, we've put in the manual for staff to watch out for using the same vendor in multiple different departments for the same thing, right? So, I'm just gonna use an example. If you're gonna order, you know, copier paper for the city, there should be theoretically, all the departments should be talking together and putting in one order that should be bid out, right? By one contractor because that order is usually gonna be more than twenty-five thousand for a year. So, it will require coordination amongst departments. And we noted that in the amendment. As to your second question, so the ordinance amendment would then comport to what we have in the manual. Um, fifty percent came in. Um, I believe staff, uh, went and spoke to, uh, the city of Evanston's finance department and that's the policy that they have and so that's the policy that staff is recommending be adopted.
So, anything less than fifty percent, well, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, it has to come to the council?
Anything over twenty-five thousand? Fifty percent triggers the rebid usually is, for public works for sure, fifty percent triggers a rebid, absolutely.
And anything under twenty-five thousand, the mayor can?
Correct.
Authorize?
Correct.
Are there any other questions?
So, in reference to what you had indicated, so how do we keep from reduplicating the same vendors? Is there a list that you go by or how is, how is it navigated?
Well, I think it requires, again, coordination amongst the departments. So, specifically during budget time, it would require the departments to actually consider what they're using for the same or similar supplies across the board and then look to coordinating, you know, a, a bid for bulk orders. Specifically, how finance handles that now, I don't, I don't know if Sherri or Don, you wanna speak to that? Or how the departments would, you know, coordinate? I don't, I don't have an answer to that, but...
All we have to do is identify those goods or services that are used by more than one department. Identify that list and get the departments to coordinate, to work together.
It's actually more economical for the departments to all bid together because you're gonna theoretically get the best price, hopefully, um, when you bid it out as opposed to, you know, one department orders twenty-five thousand here, another department orders ten thousand there. You know, there should be a better coordination. The idea is there would be better coordination amongst the departments and, and better budgeting for that purpose.
So, does this need some more tweaking before we actually go into a vote for this? That's what it sounds like.
The process is gonna be the same. Only, only difference is that the departments won't have to come back and get authorization if it's under twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, per, um, project.
Per, right. So, just because it's the same vendor, so if you have a concrete vendor that gets a project to prepare a sidewalk and then three months later, they get a separate contract to, you know, repair the streets, those two different contracts are signed. Um, if, you know, they're both under twenty-five thousand or the grand total is under twenty-five thousand, the idea is they wouldn't have to come back here. They're treated as separate contracts. Right now, the city is treating them, e, even though it's under twenty-five thousand, they're bringing it back. The staff are bringing it back before you each and every time, even if it's for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars.
At the same thing.
Yeah, the same thing. They've budgeted for it. The thing to watch out for, which I think we've tried to address in the policy is this, is stringing issue of, again, same persons creating multiple LLCs is trying to create some sort of fraudulent action upon the city. I'm not saying that that's happening, but it is something that insurance carriers are warning and auditors are warning cities across the country about.
So, what is to say that somebody wants a project done, they said, well, it's gonna cost seventy-five thousand and it, but you know what? So, you don't have to go to council and, and say it's seventy-five thousand.
They would have to.
We're gonna split it up into like four different projects.
There's nothing stopping that from happening now. A, that's true. Um, B, again...
So, it basically needs some more tweaking. So, I think we should hold off on this.
Well, there, there... It's really up to the project manager of the department. That's why you have professional staff to bid out the projects. They wouldn't be bidding it out in parts. It's not up to the contractor. It's up to the staff how they bid out those. And I could tell you right now, all our RFPs go through the law department and they go through finance to look at first. So, when, you know, for instance, Public Works, Shannon's bidding out for a project, she's looking at the whole of the project. She's not bidding it out piece by piece by piece unless she has bid out an RFP and vendors are only bidding on, you know, three-fourths of the project, then she might have to go back out. But generally speaking, you know, that's, this up to the staff to coordinate to make sure that they're putting out a comprehensive RFP for bid.
Can this be added onto the language?
For...
Not to piece it out.
Not to piece it out?
That's why I said it needs some more tweaking. So, I put a motion to hold, put this on hold.
I have a question.
Alderman Bolton?
So, if we hold it, aren't we holding up the process? I mean, how, is that gonna look?
It would be held in committee, um, and then we'd have to come back and see if we can get it approved. So, yes, it would be held. It would, it'd be held, but if there's specific language that the aldermen want in this, we're happy to take back that feedback and work on it a little bit more.
Yep. Let's work on the language. Motion to put, put a hold.
Did everybody read exhibit A? In your packet. Actually, the only thing that we're doing is changing percentages. That's all we're doing, is changing the percentages. The original contract or the original ordinance states, in the event a contract necessitates any increase in the original contract price by five percent of the city coun, the city council would have to approve the annual amount, but not to exceed five thousand dollars. What we're doing is changing where you have several departments that are using the same vendor. This is my understanding. Several departments using the same vendor. But in one department, they may not have gone over the twenty-five thousand dollars, but the two departments together have gone over the twenty-five thousand dollars. That's why they keep being, bringing it back to the council. It's not the, uh, say, for instance, contract or project A. It's project A and project B together is more than a twenty-five thousand dollars and not just the one contract. So, that's why they keep bringing it back to us. It could be an increase of a thousand dollars. They're bringing it back to us because the two or the three contracts together are more than the twenty-five thousand dollars which we had in our original ordinance. So, what they're trying to do is say, per contract, if it doesn't go over twenty-five thousand dollars per contract, it doesn't have to keep coming back here to the council. If it's not over fifty, well, fifty percent triggers, that it has to go out for bid again. If it's under twenty-five thousand dollars, the mayor can approve it. If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, it has to come back to the council. Per project, not per vendor. Everybody?
I under, I understand the ordinance. I understand what they're asking for. I just see too many loopholes and I don't like the loopholes. I want them closed.
There's not, and look...
The language needs to be changed.
The issue...
I mean, we already, you already said that it just needs, it needs to be changed. I put a motion to put on hold to figure this out.
Do we need a second to hold it? We need a second to hold it over? We don't have a second to hold it? Are there any other questions? I'm, I'm ready to move forward with it, with the twenty-five thousand. But, um, I know that we can bring it back at any time and if it needs to be the fifty percent, changing it to twenty-five percent.
So, I will note that item H, as you've just explained, the purchasing policy does coordinate with item I, which is an amendment to the code. So, to pass one and not the other would create a contradiction. I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We already, we just passed the...
Item H is the per, is the amendment to the purchasing policy which will mimic in part item I, which is a code amendment?
The next one.
So, to pass one and not the other would create an inconsistency at this point. Just wanna point that out.
So, I understand is coordinated with C, D, E, and F?
No, H and I.
H and I.
H and I go together.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for lack of a second, um, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye, motion carried. Item I, ordinance amending division two article six regarding, uh, change orders in the city of Waukegan. Uh, staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the ordinance amending division article, uh, six regarding change orders in the city of Waukegan. Um, can I get a motion on the floor and then, um, discussion?
So moved.
I second.
Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Bolton. Prior to the proposed amendment, in the event a contract necessitates any increase in the original contract price of five percent or more or exceeds five thousand dollars, uh, of the city council approval annual amount, the change order must be brought before the mayor and city council for approval. The city is amending division two article six of the ordinance regarding change orders to be consistent with Illinois Public Works Contract Change Order Act fifty IL CS five-two-five slash one ET SEQ. Change orders to contracts, when the original contract is twenty-five thousand dollars or more, which increase or reduce the contract price by fifty percent or more and/or in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars must be submitted to the city council for approval. Are there any questions?
I have a question. And just to, just to make sure I understand. Um, so if there's a project, right? And we, you know, it gets approved, we're doing it and isn't that just one project itself? So, if they weren't to bid for something else, that would be a whole different project, right?
Yes, it's by contract.
By contract.
And by bid, yeah.
So, how, how common is this where people are, or contracts are changing over twenty-five thousand?
Well, it shouldn't, it really shouldn't be happening much because when you put out an RFP, the RFP should be comprehensive enough and contain language that the bidder should make their best effort to estimate that cost. Now, things come up. So, like, I'll give an example. Um, if they're doing, uh, you know, a road improvement and in so doing, they noticed, you know, there's a water main break, and I'm just making up a crazy example, but that same contractor can expeditiously and, um, cheaply fix that, that might, that's a change order because that wasn't contemplated in the original contract. So, things like that happen, but it should never happen where you have a, a full bid put out, there's a response to the bid, the bid's accepted, contract signed, and then all of a sudden, the contractor comes back and says, meh, you know, this is costing me a little extra. I, I think I wanna come back and ask you all for an increase in cost of another ten, fifteen, twenty thousand.
And for, for our current fiscal year right now, um, how many, uh, how, how many, uh, times have we had to do that for a specific project, like a, a major project?
I don't know. I think that, that would be an answer between finance, public works and, uh...
Usually. They always come in front of us.
Usually, public works, uh...
But not anymore after this.
No, this, you would still come before council under the parameters of the amendment, so fifty percent or more, um, and over twenty-five thousand.
And fifty cent, fifty percent or more would be, triggers a rebid anyway?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any more questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
No. I told you, the language gets fixed.
Aye, motion carried. We have all of our reports and communication in our packet and then we also got a, um, a more little streamlined one for the sake of time. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding any of the reports and communications? Being none, can I get a, a motion to adjourn? I saw move. Motion by Alderman, um, Bolton. Second by Alderman Florian to adjourn at six-twenty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I just do this and I forgot already.
Turn us off.
Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, seven oh two, and we're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting. Can I have roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Jorge Bonilla up to the podium along with his wife, and they're going to give the invocation for this evening.
I exhort therefore, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, thanksgiving be made on behalf of all men, on behalf of kings and all who are in high position, that they may lead a quiet and tranquil life in all goodness, goodness, goodnessness, in gravity. This is good and acceptable in sight of our Savior God.
Exhorto ante todo a que se hagan peticiones, oraciones, intercesiones y acciones de gracia por todos los hombres, por los reyes y por todos los que están en eminencia, para que llevemos una vida tranquila y sosegada en toda piedad y dignidad, porque esto es bueno y aceptable delante de Dios nuestro Salvador.
Dear Lord, we are so thankful that we can have this time and this council meeting. Lord, will you ask us to pray? Pray for all the ones who lead us, the ones who are in authority, so you can come to them and give them wisdom and understanding. And, Lord, if it can take in their shoulders the city of Waukegan. Lord, we pray as you command. We pray as you ask us to. Lord, we bless them in your precious name. Pray for Mayor and Taylor. We pray for every, oh, every elderly man, every one of them, the ones who are in leadership, authorities, the police department, oh, the firemen, all of them, Lord, who have authority over all of us. Lord, that they will have the wisdom from you coming from above, so they can guide us and lead us in this wonderful town of Waukegan, in the one we live, and we bless them in your name.
Señor, te damos gracias por este tiempo que nos das para poder bendecir a nuestra alcalde, Ann Taylor, y asimismo también a cada concejal. Te damos gracias, señor, y oramos también para que tú bendigas esta ciudad. Oramos por todos los que están en eminencia, señor, por estas autoridades, por los bomberos, por la policía. Oh, señor Jesús, dale sabiduría como llevar a cabo, señor Jesús, cada uno su función. Los bendecimos en el nombre de Jesús.
Amen.
Amén.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, or welcome to the September eighteenth city council meeting. Again, I want to remind people that we put out our agendas the Friday before our city council meeting. Please feel free to download those agendas and look at them. Again, you can get those off our website at waukeganil.gov and receive all the information on the agendas before the meetings. I want to take this opportunity to express how grateful I am this weekend. Our downtown was packed with thousands of residents and visitors as we celebrated the Fiesta Patria's events. I, you know, I want to personally congratulate both organizations that came together and hosted the parades. And even though we had rain, we had an outstanding amount of people that came out. And we also had an outstanding demonstration of how our community can come together. We've got to remember that diversity in our city is the strength of our city, and diversity unites us. And, you know, it puts our differences aside and makes us a community and makes us look at experiencing different things and, you know, promoting and understanding and empathy in the whole process. So I want to again thank you for coming out, supporting the events. We had a great time. We had two parades on Sunday. We had two festivals. There were things going on all over the city. I'd also like to thank the police department. We had over forty officers out, the fire department. Our public works department did a phenomenal job, especially in all the rain, keeping things clean. Our finance department and our risk departments were also out during the whole events. And I just want to take the opportunity of thanking them for being out because this again is going above and beyond what the call of duty is for them. So thank you to everybody. I, you know, I look forward to Waukegan hosting more and more events and us learning about each other and really coming together as a community. This was a perfect example of how we can do it, and I hope in the future we continue to do it. Again, great things happened. Before I continue with the mayor's comments, I'd like to bring up Police Chief Navarro, and he's going to update us a little bit on some of the statistics for crime because I find it important that we understand what's really going on. A lot of times we hear this is happening, that is happening. For instance, last night it was all over Facebook that there was a shooting at Belvedere Mall. There really wasn't a shooting at Belvedere Mall. There were also reports of shots fired being over the city. Actually, they were fireworks. So I want to make sure that we're getting the right information out, and it's not just what you hear and read on social media. Chief?
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, everyone. I'm going to talk a little bit about the crime rate that we've had in 2023 in comparison to the same time period in 2022. So currently, we have eight homicides here in the city of Waukegan. Six of them are solved, and two, we still have leads that we've developed and are working at making arrests in both of them. They're very solid leads. In comparison to 2022, we had eleven homicides in 2022, and we had six that were solved, five that unfortunately are still unsolved. We've had a drastic decrease in rapes in the city by forty-two percent last year compared to this year. Robberies are slightly up compared to both years. We're at fifty and we're now at sixty-nine. Again, going not for the whole year, but from January through the end of August. We currently are at about five percent less ag assaults and batteries. Our burglaries are down twenty-five percent. Our thefts are down twenty percent. Now, our stolen motor vehicles, because of the Kias and the situation that was, that's been posted online, making it easier for thieves to steal these vehicles, were up quite a bit. We're up about fifty steals in comparison to the year prior. Our arsons are up by two, but in totality of all crime, we're down just over fifteen percent. I want to talk about our homicides a little bit more in comparisons, in the comparison where we're at this year to the years prior for the last ten years. Going back to 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2021, we had eleven homicides in the city. On average, we solved six of them. Again, this year we've had eight. We've solved six, and we're working on leads to bring closure to the two remaining homicides that are open. We get a lot of complaints about traffic in the city. We've stepped up our traffic details, our speeding details. We all, we get many complaints about vehicles speeding throughout the city. Currently, we've issued five thousand eight hundred and forty-three citations. Last year, we're at four thousand one hundred and forty-two. We get a lot of complaints about vehicles and parking throughout the city. We're currently issued sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three citations. Last year, we're at ten thousand seven hundred and forty-three. And then weapons, guns that we have taken into evidence, mainly through traffic stops, the majority. So that's, that number is at a hundred and ninety-five so far this year. And that does not count the gun buyback that we had, where a hundred and sixty-seven guns were turned in.
Sir, Chief, would you repeat the gun stats?
Yes, one hundred and ninety-five, and that's through September eighteenth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Again, I'm going to periodically have the chief update us on crime because it's, I don't want to say that crime is not happening, and you will never hear me say that. But what you do hear is people say, oh, crime is so much worse now than it was twenty years ago. In fact, that is not true. Thanks to technology and other things, crime is actually being solved much faster. And again, it's through great detective work, but it's also through, you know, technology that we get leads and that kind of thing. I will say, social media, we're in the day of immediately when something happens, people post it, and they don't usually have their facts. And I just gave you an example of what happened this weekend about a shooting at Belvedere Mall that did not happen. So thank you, Chief, for the remarks. Some general things going on that I'd like you to know. As a reminder to all Waukegan businesses, the city will host a virtual Waukegan business meeting this Wednesday, September twentieth at two PM. For more information, you can contact Victoria at the mayor's office at eight four seven five nine nine two five one five. September is National Suicide Prevention Month. If you or someone you know is in distress and has suicidal thoughts, call nine eight eight. The nine eight eight lifeline is available twenty-four hours, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for free and confidential support for people in distress and crisis, for you or people you know that need the resources. I encourage those who can attend the eleventh annual Walk Run for the Awareness for Suicide Prevention on Saturday, the twenty-third, at the College of Lake County. Waukegan's high school homecoming is this Friday, and it'll kick off with a parade through the neighborhood north of Brookside Campus starting at five thirty, and the varsity football game is at seven PM at Weiss Field. Please wear purple, green, and gold and cheer on the Bulldogs. But again, when you're going through those neighborhoods, please note that there is a parade going on at five thirty. So traffic will be, you know, not able to go through the way you want or expecting, so be aware of it. Flu season is starting. There's free flu vaccines are available for seniors fifty-five and older at the Patricia A. Jones Center this Wednesday, the twentieth, from ten to twelve PM. There's free flu vaccines for the whole community at the Waukegan Public Library on Thursday, the twenty-first, from four thirty to six thirty, and at Roberta Community House on Saturday, September twenty-third, from noon to three. Waukegan Township and Baxter Credit Union will hold a paper shredding event just in time for the fall cleaning. Bring your personal documents for shredding to the Patricia A. Jones Center this coming Saturday, the twenty-third, between nine AM and one. I also believe there's one at the high school tomorrow morning at nine AM. Next Sunday, enjoy the Harbor Food Truck Festival with about a dozen food trucks and live music from noon to four. The festival will be held at Cyver Park in Greentown on the Rocks, and all are welcome. As a reminder, the Higher Lake County Job Fair will be next Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from eleven to one thirty at Lincolnshire Marriott Resort and is open to all job seekers. Hiring employers will be available for questions and, in some cases, onsite interviews. What I will tell you, in Waukegan, there are jobs. I have been to some of our businesses that would love to have people come and apply. Most of them do not even require college degrees. Some that are looking are Astronics, American Outfitters. Nielsen Massey is also looking for people, so those are just to name a few. But please note that there are jobs in our community, and please come out. All our restaurants are looking for help. We need labor forces. So if you are looking, please look at any of those jobs, and again, this health fair is also available. The Lake County NAACP ACTSO competition kicks off Saturday, September thirtieth, at ten AM at the College of Lake County Lakeshore Campus at the Eleanor Murky Community Center. And if you're interested in the, or interested African-American high school students may compete in one or more of thirty-three STEM humanities, business, performing, visual, and culinary arts competitions over one year. Information about any of these events, you can go to the city's website at waukeganil.gov. And I just want to remind people that why all these diapers are sitting up here is this is diaper awareness month, and we are collecting diapers for those children that we need to help support the families of. And we will learn about an organization tonight that we have had here before, keeping families covered, that actually donates diapers to families in need. So we have a collection box downstairs, and if any of you are interested in giving them, please just drop off the box, and we will make sure they get them. And that concludes my comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. You have a couple of proclamations, ma'am?
Yes.
Would you like me to read those? Proclamation, Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church Day, September seventh, 2023. Whereas the AME Church grew out of the Free African Society, FAS, which Richard Allen, Absalom Jones, and others established in Philadelphia in seventeen eighty-seven. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church was founded in Waukegan in nineteen oh four. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church's first pastor was Reverend Harry E. Johnson, and he served the congregation from nineteen oh four through nineteen twenty-four. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church began a fundraising campaign in nineteen eleven to build a church at four five four one Oak Street, and the project was completed and dedicated in June of nineteen thirteen. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church is a leader in the civil rights movement in our area and is referred to by many as the mother of all Negro churches in Lake County because numerous other churches were established due to their support and influence. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church enjoyed great growth of their congregation from nineteen fifty-three and nineteen through nineteen sixty under the leadership of Pastor Bob Thomas. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church opened the doors to their new church at two ten South Avenue in nineteen fifty-seven and became known as the Church of Happy People. And whereas Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Church has had twenty-three pastors in their one hundred and nineteen years of service to the community, including their first female pastor, Reverend Janice Brazil Cummings, who served from twenty twelve through twenty twenty. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim September seventh, 2023, as Trinity AME Church Day in Waukegan to celebrate their one hundred and nineteenth anniversary. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, was presented at the Trinity AME Church Landmarking Event on Thursday, September seventh, 2023, and read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council Meeting on Monday, September eighteenth, 2023. And I believe you have some people from AME Church here.
Pastor Brown, would you like to come up? We did do landmarking of the church. But right there, come and I want you to say some words to us and give us the enlightenment that you gave us the day on September seventh when we talked.
First of all, I am honored to be here tonight, and to God be the glory. And I just want to thank each of you for your, sure, for your love and your support of Trinity. We proudly celebrate a hundred and nineteen years of existence, September the tenth, and we are a strong beacon of light in the community that we serve. So we are just glad and honored. So we are just glad and honored to be proud Trinitarians. So thank you for your continued support. Thank you for allowing us to serve a community that's in need, and we look forward to your, uh, presence at Trinity. So thank you, uh, Mayor Taylor, for being there with us, and for all of you, just for loving us the way that you do. Thank you very much.
I have to just say one more word about our, our First World Alderman. I, I have been here going on three years, and she has been with me since day one, and she has walked, you know, this road with me, so I really appreciate her as well. So thank you, Dr. Bolton. Yeah.
I just want to say, we are very, very lucky to have you in Waukegan, and Pastor Brown, you know how I feel about you. Um, it's, it's incredible listening to you, and I can't tell you how happy I am that you are just a part of our community. I also want to remind people that if you don't know, they are doing tutoring at Barwell from three to five every Wednesday afternoon. So if any of you would like to volunteer, please be in touch with Pastor Brown, and she'll help you get established in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am. You do have a second proclamation?
Yep.
Would you like me to read that?
I'll have you read it, and then I'm going to call, um, them up here today to receive the proclamation, so go ahead.
Proclamation Diaper Need Awareness Week, September eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Whereas diaper need, not being able to afford a sufficient supply of diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, can adversely affect the health of children and families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that one in three families struggle with diaper need, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend the supply. And whereas purchasing enough diapers to make a child clean can consume fourteen percent of low-wage families' post-tax income, making it difficult to secure the necessary supply. And whereas supply of diapers is often an eligibility requirement to participate in childcare and early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of four days of work each month due to an insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas, without enough diapers, children risk infections that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs, and preventing parents from assessing childcare needed to go to work or school, destabilizing families' economic prospects. And whereas Waukegan recognizes diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing it can lead to economic opportunity for families and improve children's health. And whereas the city of Waukegan is proud to be home to community-based organizations, including Keeping Families Covered, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families. And whereas diaper banks and the staff and volunteers who run them are community leaders and logistic experts who ensure a stable and sustainable supply of basic necessities. And whereas through their, uh, addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant well-being, and advancing economic growth. And now therefore be resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor of the city of Waukegan do hereby proclaim the week of September eighteen through September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city. Thank the diaper bank, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their service, and encourage citizens to donate generously to diaper banks and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. Be it further resolved that the su- that a suitably embossed copy of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Keeping Families Covered, adopted this eighteenth day of September, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anne Marie, would you come up, please?
So for those of you who don't know, Anne Marie, she's an incredible woman, and let me just tell you, you want to tell them how many children you have?
I said.
She may not look like it, but she's had seven children, so she knows a thing or two about diapers and babies. Um, but you are located in the A Port, but you go to all different communities, and what they do is they dispense diapers, they also have clothes there, they sometimes have formula, they can get enough formula, but they also do menstrual products for women as well, because it's, again, another cost for, um, women in our, our workforce that when you're low income, those are things that you can't afford. So, like I said, this is a lady who started out diapering her own children and has learned, hey, there's a need in this community. So, I'm here at Waukegan, and I want to thank you both for all your work that you do, and if you'd like to volunteer with them, you can go ahead and, um, go to their website, um, Keeping Families Covered, and it'll show you how to volunteer, but what they do is they take, um, large amounts of diapers, and they put them into smaller units so that every week, um, people are getting diapers. So, um, like I said, if you haven't had a chance to visit, it's great to see. You'll be surprised how many diapers that they have in their warehouse. So thank you very much for everything you do, and we really appreciate it.
Okay, that, um, concludes our resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Audience time, Madam Clerk.
All right. Thank you, yes, well, you will have a number of people tonight. I'm going to call your name. Please proceed to the east side of the room. We'll time you for three minutes. In addition, uh, Mayor, will the camera be on them tonight, or just on the dais? Will the camera be on them? Are the instructions for them? Oh, thank you so much. The first five will be Patricia A. Simmons, Gary Simmons, Mr. Rayon Edwards, Mr. Jerry Holiski, and Brother Blanks. Patricia A. Simmons, Gary Simmons, Rayon Edwards, Jerry Holiski, and Brother Blanks. State your name and go right ahead and start.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Simmons. I have been a resident of Waukegan for over fifty years. My question is, why is the Waukegan Metro train station inaccessible after one fifteen P M. during the week and not at all on the weekends? The last train from Chicago arrives at one fifty-one A M. That leaves riders without access to shelter for over twelve hours every day. If you're like me, you use Metro frequently to access goods and services all along the North Shore. There have been times I've arrived and had to wait for my ride while being drenched by the rain, battling blistering heat, and struggling with bitterly cold temperatures. I've also observed riders with young children and senior citizens like myself experience the same things, and I'm heartbroken. I contacted Metro and was told that the city of Waukegan manages this building. During this discussion, I was told that the city of Waukegan opted to limit access to this construct due to concerns about unhoused or unsheltered individuals occupying this space. This cannot be the position of our governing body. Although the security of patrons is a priority, there must be a way to employ remote technologies to monitor and secure this building. As a resident and frequent Metro patron, I need to access this building beyond two P M. on any given day. We should be able to utilize the amenities afforded to our beautiful North Shore community despite the challenges we face. Might I offer a suggestion? Perhaps we consider using cameras to monitor the, the facility and determine when a physical response may be required. The Ring Doorbell offers two-way, real-time interaction. Why can't this technology be expanded to actively manage public spaces as well? Starting in Walk, in Kenosha, Wisconsin, Wisconsin, and ending at the Ogilvy Transportation Center in Chicago, there are twenty-six stations along the Union Pacific North Route of Metro Rail. Of the twenty-six stations, approximately twenty percent have twenty-four hour access. I'm trying to hurry up because I know I only have a few minutes. Thirty percent close after five P M., thirty percent close before five P M., fifteen percent only offer shelter, and five percent is unknown. Of the thirty percent closing before five P M., Waukegan, in my opinion, has ridership that would support my request. We have a new casino here in Waukegan. Perhaps others will use Metro to access our new casino. Four of the other stations are on platforms or other physical spaces that may impede the ability to offer additional services. Two may have lower ridership or other activities influence the decision of local governance.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Thank you. Gary Simmons?
Oh, he's with me.
You're together?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rayon Edwards?
Good evening. Um, congratulations, Pastor Brown. I'm, I'm glad that they're finally recognizing Trinity, and, uh, I appreciate you giving some kudos out to the First World Alderman. And as you say, you've been here three years, and she's been with you every step of the way. I love that. Now I just ask you, First World Alderman, just like you support Trinity Church, I need you to support that community the same way, 'cause still, the community still don't know who you are. So I'm, I'm saying it again. The other piece that I want to talk about is, everybody see on Lewis Plaza, um, the Waukegan Community Outreach Youth Group that is ran by this Alderman, Victor Felix, and Mr. Miguel Rivera. Every weekend, we got a big old thing set up up there where they selling stuff, and I don't know why this is okay, because if we're trying to talk about businesses, those businesses that's there in that plaza have to pay taxes on things that they sell. Nobody else should be allowed to do that unless they're paying taxes. They also have fifteen and sixteen-year-old kids standing on corners selling flowers and teddy bears. Do you guys not know how dangerous that is? That these kids are walking through traffic? I stopped a sixteen-year-old boy this weekend, and he told me that he's with you guys. I just hope for your sake that you're not using that nonprofit money to funnel your campaign, Mr. Alderman, wannabe clerk, or whatever you want to be, but I'm definitely paying attention, 'cause I definitely don't know where you got the money from. The last piece to you, Mayor. Chief, thank you so much for giving us an update on those statistics, and respectfully to you, sir, I don't know if those statistics are true, 'cause I'm gonna talk about Michael Osborne, the black man that they just found dead on Hammont, where had a bullet hole in the back of his head. How did our police department not see that? How much money do we put into them for training and all of these things, and they still drop the ball? Please tell me how? Please tell me where the residents are safe at. It's gun violence every night, but you wouldn't know that, 'cause your house is too far out. You don't hear that. But we get up here and we put these numbers up here, you think those numbers make us feel good? They damn sure don't make us feel safe. So I don't want to feel good. I want to be safe. And then I want to talk about this, because I seen the video that Blanks put up of them recording the police taking a young man out. So we gonna let Detective Oliver, or whatever his name is, he'd already killed somebody in the community, so he gets to just walk up to people and make those type of threats? Let that had have been one of us. We'd have been hogtied, laid down on the ground, and handcuffed. Y'all better get them under control, 'cause the one thing you don't want to do is keep pressing a button with these people, 'cause eventually, we will fight back, and you not gonna like that fight. I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holiski.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'd like to withdraw my request to speak tonight. I'm not going to take any of your time. Thanks anyway.
Next time. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Uh, first, on this coming Saturday night, um, this coming Monday, Black Abolition Movement for, no, I'm talking about Monday. Saturday, uh, we will be having our first Saturday night at the movie, for, uh, youth Saturday night at the movie. So one of our eight-years-old, eight-year-olds, he chose a movie which would be featuring, uh, The Boy Who Hunteth the Wind, which we think is a good movie. Even though it's for the youth, all are invited out. It's gonna be at seven o'clock, but if you have any questions on details, it says seven-seven-three five-one-zero-seventeen thirteen that you can call. Uh, now, WCOBA. Initially, for those of you who don't know that acronym, Waukegan Civilian Officer Police Accountability. Um, we're looking at WCOBA. I initially had suggested to hear from some of the Aldermen. I'm glad to hear from some of those Aldermen who have spoke up and said, voiced their views on WCOBA. Like I said, I, I think it's a point that's critical that everybody at least say something, whether you agree with it or not. So those Aldermen that have done so, uh, which is good. Uh, I know Alderman Bolden, Alderman Bolden chimed in, uh, Mr. Jose Guzman, Guzman, Ms. Florin. Uh, recently, it was brought to my attention, I wasn't here at the last city council meeting that our mayor have even expressed her views as far as the feasibility for a civilian, Waukegan Civilian Officer Police Accountability. Uh, now, I asked all the Aldermen to speak their views, but I did notice, after it was brought to my attention, I go back to view the city council meeting, and after the mayor said her views on what it was, and how she felt as far as about the feasibility, we have, we don't want to use this, as I told many times, Alderman Keith Turner, uh, after the mayor spoke of views, you've had many opportunities to speak on what you feel about the civilian officer police accountability, yet we have not heard from you publicly. And, but when the mayor spoke, you says, well, the mayor, uh, I've had, asked eight times for to have a public safety committee, I haven't had it yet, the mayor's now talking about having this Waukegan Civilian Officer Police Accountability, and you spoke of it in a derogatory way. However, on a sidebar, about a, a month ago, when we asked you what was your views, and I had the sidebar with our Alderman over there, you said, well, Blanks, we looking at, maybe we should have a meeting about it, but yet, sir, we have not had that meeting yet. I don't know why you haven't, but let's, no, don't, don't put that on the mayor, because you can meet with us anytime you want to, so don't be pointing down there. But we do not want to play politics, sir, with the lives of our people out here in the community. If you have a view, make your view known, and don't stress what the mayor said, let's hear from you, and what your views are.
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
Thank you.
Randy Sabecki.
Good evening, everyone, tonight. Um, I do want to thank Alderman Keith Turner, and Alderman Donaworth, and Chief of Staff George Bridges for showing up for the nine-eleven ceremony on nine-eleven. You know, that was a horrific day, the attack on our country, and it was sad that we, as a city, didn't have anything. All the fire trucks that were out here on that day and time, we should be honoring the lives that were lost that day, not swearing in new ones, firemen at the station on that day and at, you know, that time. Every year, there should be a ceremony, and the city should be involved, and our fire department should be involved, with one of the biggest fire departments. You know, that was a lot of lives lost that day. There were no police, no fire over there at all, but all the fire trucks were out here, and they were here at City Hall. That, I think, was a shame. Um, second thing I'd like to talk about is, Mayor, you told me to do my homework. Remember that conversation? Well, I do. And you did make a statement that Alderman could not talk to department heads. It came, it came into a policy through George Bridges, that they have to contact George Bridges first, let him know what it's about and everything else before they can talk to him. That's telling them they can't talk to department heads, basically, exactly what it is. There's a policy put out that, that said that. Um, other than that, you know, I'm glad, Chief, that you did bring up the numbers with the speeding and the citations and everything else, but my suggestion, instead of having, again, all the officers here wasting taxpayer dollars? But my suggestion, instead of having, again, all the officers here wasting taxpayer dollars for during the city council meetings, we have the police chief here. Police department is right there. Why don't we put those officers on the street to combat more of the speeders, the running stop signs? We ought to just put optional at every stop sign within our city, because they drive right through them every day. You know, we need the officers out there on the streets, not wasting taxpayer dollars sitting here. You know, we put up ropes, we lock this down, we got emergency buttons back there. Police department, like I said, is right there. But, you know, it's about the city. I was on, what is it, Louis the other day, at the stop sign right there, the stop light, red light. They just drove right through it. Cars flying back and forth down Louis. You know, it's dangerous. Kids are gonna get killed before we do something. And when we say it, I like to see our Community Crimes Division be renamed back to the gang unit, because this city has a big gang problem. We might not work like the Word Gang, but that's exactly what they specialize in, and that's what it should be. Not Community Crimes. It should be Gang Unit. That's what they specialize in. That's what it should be brought back to. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Carrasco. Margaret, are the queens separate, or are they with you?
Uh, they were, we have, just in case we run out of time, three minutes each one of them.
Okay, so we have Margaret Carrasco, Mariana Campos, and Leslie Gonzalez. Whoever's gonna speak first, go right ahead and just say your name.
Yes, good evening. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central, and South America. The observation started in 1968 in Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson, and was expanded by Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was actually enacted into law in 1988 and approved as a public law, 100-402. The day of September 15th significant because the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, and Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and September 18th respectfully. So the Waukegan Latino community kicked off on September 15th with our beauty pageant, and I have our director and two of our -- we're very proud of our youth because they realize the importance of celebrating their culture. But we want to, first of all, say thank you to all those persons that have been so supportive, the business community, community organizations, our elected officials, though some, unfortunately not all. And because this is the first, this is the first time that our community was under attack with racism, attack with vindication. But despite that, the community came through, okay? Despite all the walls and injustices were placed in front of us. At the parade yesterday, it was a huge slap on our mayor for all the racism and vindication attacks that you did. But despite that, we were there. The community was there, full force, okay? You united us more, which is great, all the different nationalities. You united our minority community. The African-American community, thank you for being so supportive of this injustice to us. We really appreciate that, and we want to continue this relationship. I'm going to now, at this time, introduce our pageant director, and then each of our Latina, our queen, and our Ms. Juergan will have some words to say. Thank you.
So Margaret, you want me to start the three minutes for her, correct?
Um, okay. Yeah.
All right.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Delgado, and I'm the Fiesta de Patrici pageant director for 2023. And the last Friday, we have a huge event. That's when it was for choosing our beautiful queen, Mariana Campos. And we have a very good time over there. And also, we have 10 girls participating in this event. So we want to say thank you to everybody who support us, or our team was really, the people were working so hard to make it, to make this event, and also the girls feel like comfortable with all the situation that we have. And, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous, because it's like I've seen a lot of people. And just I want to say thank you to everybody. And I want to present you, Mariana Campos, and she is our queen. And the girl is Leslie Gonzalez, and she's our other contestant. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Campos, I'm gonna start it over for you.
Hi, my name is Mariana Campos. I'm 18 years old. I just want to say to the City Hall, thank you very much for letting us do the parade. And I'm really proud of representing the Waukegan Fiesta de Patrici 2023, and of course, representing my state, Jalisco. And thank you, everyone, to support our event. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Leslie Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leslie Gonzalez. I am 21 years old, and I'm very proud to be representing my beautiful state of Michoacan. I'm also happy to be elected for Miss Monogenic. I want to take the time to thank the organizers like Elizabeth, Maribel, Margaret, Jasmine, and my designer sponsors who made this outfit possible. This made me feel the most beautiful girl in the world. And also to thank the community who supported this beautiful Mexican tradition every year. It was honestly amazing to be part of the Waukegan Pageant. Thank you very much.
Miguel Estrada? Miguel Estrada?
First time for me talking here. Thank you first to the people who was supporting us since the beginning of this problem what we got with the mayor, because we were in a situation about the parade since the beginning. Where is your kid? The little, the newspaper guy, he don't come here, they're all. I would say thank you to Guzman. Thank you for Victor, Juan, Mike, thank you for supporting us, and especially Kid, you always have been also part of our family now, where you are a family now. Thank you. And after, and thank you to everybody who say aye to the Fiesta de Patrici Parade. It's really important. It really appreciated what you guys say aye. It's important. It has to be a courage to say aye when you have somebody on your back pressing you and saying, you don't, you don't gonna do the parade, because I got my favorite son, newspaper doing the parade against us. So that's, it's not right. So, and like Margaret, she say, thanks to you, we get united with more people. Thank you. Appreciate it. They, and they, the unity, what I can say, you know, thank you for the police department also. He was really nice, even after the pressure, the pressure what you got from your mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it. And last thing, I'm sorry, but you know, you earned it. If you see my face up, that mean, that mean fuck you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Clyde McLemore?
First of all, Clyde McLemore from Black Lives Matter. I want to first let you know that October the 9th is Engenders, Indentioners Day. We used to call it Columbus Day. Kids won't be in school, so Black Lives Matter sponsoring a trip to the Chicago Museum of Science and Industry, and it's a free registration. We go feed them, transport them there, snacks on the bus, bring them back, and lunch on October the 9th. We try to keep our children safe. I also want to comment on what Blanks, Piggie, on the police department for years. So I, you know, I haven't said anything, because it said, Blanks, you got the lead, you know? But I support that 110%, but when I read this article, I've been a sick, so I've been keeping up. I've been watching it on TV, on YouTube, and reading the newspaper. The mayor say she with it, but she feel the police department is doing the best they job they can do. Now, when I got out the hospital Friday, I had to deliver something over the botwell, and it was daytime. It was like about 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and kids was getting out of school. Children was actually getting out with their backpacks and stuff. And the SWAT team is there. In the mid-afternoon while these kids are getting out of school, the SWAT team is there. They had two apartments that they went to. They didn't find nothing. But if one of them guns had went off, or if it had been a shootout, our children was not being safe. Now, I understand we need to get guns off the street, and if you figured somebody got a, you know, they need to do their investigation, but it's a certain time that they should do them raids, you know? Not, probably do them while the kids going to school. You know, they go get the same thing, and we made it so bad. When they pulled up, they came, they came so professional. You should have saw this. This was like out of the movies. They came all out, and every house they went to, people was standing outside looking at them. People was actually outside looking at them. No house that they went to, that they, you know, they, they on the, we're outside, and the people in this apartment, please come out. The people walk up and say, here I am, right here. You know, it was, it's just like, what are we doing? Are we doing it for show, or are we doing it for real? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the consent agenda. Can I have a, well, first I'll ask, does anybody want to pull anything out? Yes. Alderman Florian.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out D and F.
D and F, okay. Okay. Mayor? I'd like to pull out R. What would you like to pull out? R. R? No, that's not. Oh, sorry. I apologize. I had a time, sorry. Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without item D or F included?
I'll move.
Okay. Alderman Martinez and second by Alderman Florian. Item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Item B, a motion to approve Halloween trick-or-treat hours for Sunday, October 29th, 23, from 2:00 until 5:00. I will say this is that there are parts of our city that also have different hours, so I would check with your individual Aldermen. Most of the hours in Waukegan are 2:00 to 5:00. I believe if you have a Wadsworth or Gurnee mailing address, I think they're also 2:00 to 5:00 on the Sunday. But if you have a Libertyville mailing address and live in Waukegan, your hours are probably Halloween, October 31st, from 4:00 to 8:00, just so the general public knows that. Item C, ordinance approving V-2-23, the vacation of the Hazel Street right-of-way south of Prospect Drive slash Court Place west of Sheridan Road. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September 5th, 2023. Item E, an ordinance approving zoning calendar 27-27, variance from parking requirements of two spaces per unit to 1.2 spaces per unit at Zero North Macarree. The PIN number is 8-17-100-005. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September 5th, 2023. Item G, a motion to approve the regular payroll dated September 8th, 2023, in a total amount Item A, or H, I'm sorry, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, holiday payback, cash outs, EO and CS, retro pay and final payouts dated September 8th, 23, in the total amount of $62,255.32. Item I, a motion to approve vendor payments dated September 18th, 2023, in the amount Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D, Alderman Florian, do you want to talk about that one?
Yes, I'm just.
You know what? We're gonna introduce it first, and then we'll do it. So can I have a first and a second on that? Alderman Newsom, a second?
A second.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Florian, you want to talk about it?
Yes, I don't know if anybody's here that's, oh, she is back there. Okay, I couldn't see you. I just want to clarify, after we talked about this in committee, there was some concerns brought up from the community, and the building you're proposing is brand-new, correct? There's no building there now?
That's correct.
You're not replacing any current housing?
No, there's no, nothing there right now.
Okay, all right. I was just, I just, I thought that was the case, but I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anybody being displaced or, or, okay. All right, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions to the motion?
Sorry, any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item F, can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Newsom, second, Alderman Turner. Alderman Florian, questions to the motion?
Well, I don't really have any questions, other than, I just, it's a pet peeve of mine that a lot of these repair shops and used car places and stuff begin to look like junkyards, and many of them are on our main arterial rightaways. There's one I go by on Sunset all the time, and it's just a pigpen. And I'm just concerned, I mean, this is, again, right on one of our main arterial entrances to our city. We've been trying to get people to clean up Washington Street for how long now, you know? I think once we get it repaved, which is coming, I don't think it'll be this year, but soon, I'm just concerned it's gonna turn into an eyesore. It's a very small lot, and again, it's right in a main entryway. So I mainly wanted to pull it out because I'm gonna vote no, so.
This is Alderman Hayes Ward. Noel, can you come up and talk about that a little bit? The petitioner is here this evening. What's being passed to you is some photographs of the petitioner's property in Beach Park before he took it over, and then after he was occupying the property to show how he cleaned the site and maintained it. He did offer the Alderman a tour last week, which a couple of Aldermen were able to participate in. So if any of you have any comments, and if you want to. Sorry. Everyone, if you say. Sure.
So I went through a conditional use permit in Beach Park, and that's basically before I took it over, and in 2017. I did a block top up there, invested in landscaping, fencing.
Sir, state your name, please.
Oh, I apologize. Adnan Meshkic.
One more time?
Adnan Meshkic. Uh, Adnan Meshkic. Yeah, so, uh, as you can see, in 2018, we opened that place up, and, uh, the last Google photo was taken in 2019, and it looks the same. Um, I've never had any issues with them, uh, reapproving the, or extending the conditional use license. Um, any other questions and concerns for me?
This is a much bigger property than what you have.
Co- correct, yeah, it is, but, uh, i- if, uh, I'm still able to function with, uh, less space, and it'll be much nicer, because there'll be newer, uh, more quality cars than the, the one in, uh, in Beach Park.
Okay, um, there being no other question?
Sorry, there being no other questions, can we go ahead and take the roll call?
Actually, I do.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not in favor of the, uh, whole dealership, but you know what? It's Alderman Hayes' ward, and he is in favor of it, so I think he should have it. He wants it, he, he should have it.
Alderman Florian, do you know if he's in favor of it? I can't confirm that, I don't know. Alderman, or, I'm sorry, Noel, do you know?
I believe the support was, um, everybody except Alderman Florian at committee. Um, but I, I didn't look back at the vote, I apologize.
No, that's what I remembered it, so that's what I was, yeah. Um, okay.
I, I have a comment. Now, this is one that's just on Keller and, uh, Washington, correct?
Correct.
Well, right now it's an eyesore anyway, you got cars out there now, so maybe if he's willing to, um, I think he's taking it very seriously, I can see it, uh, if he's willing to beautify it, you know, maybe, maybe reduce how many vehicles you want to sell there. Uh, but if you, if you want to, I mean, it is a black area, I can say that, but, uh, I think with, with your commitment and your, and you being responsible, you know, if you're willing to do that, then we can keep an eye on that, or keep track of that, I mean, I, I'm for it.
I actually have a contract to, uh, reseal the blacktop, uh, uh, as a stopgap until the, the landscaping is in place.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I went there, I went on the tour, and, you know, what you're going to do is going to make it look a lot better. And then with everything, uh, that you plan on doing, you know, new parking lot, getting it blacktopped or whatever, and then striped, and you close off that one entrance, and then I think, I think it'll look good. I think you are going to definitely improve the property.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Ma'am, motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, there being no reports in communication or old business onto new business. Um, I would like to, um, get a motion for an omnibus, but I want to pull out item A, B, Q, and R.
N, N, O, also.
And what was that?
N, N, O, also, please.
N, N, O, okay.
And what were yours, Mayor?
Um, they were A, B, so we've got N, O, Q, and R.
Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself briefly, but my vote is aye for the omnibus, thank you.
Okay. Um, can I have you make the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Alderman Florian, second.
I'll second.
Alderman Donaworth, okay. So this is.
Real quick, what was the one that was pulled out beside yours?
So the items are A, B, N, O, Q, and R.
So, so the motion is to omnibus, except for those items, and there was a second, we need a roll call on that.
Okay. So item C, an ordinance approving the annexation of, oh, wait, 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 this is.
We got a vote.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, roll call, on the motion for an omnibus. Minus these items that we just talked. Okay.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
He said aye. He said aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, item C is an ordinance approving the annexation of thirty-six, nine fifty-five North Northern Avenue, and authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item D, an ordinance approving the zoning calendar twenty-seven twenty-five, map amendment for CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture to R two, Single Family District at thirty-six, nine fifty-five North Northern Avenue. Again, this matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item E, an ordinance amending section eleven point three, or, I'm sorry, eleven dash three dash four of the site ordinance regarding authorized and prohibited sign variances. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item F, a resolution authorizing the utilization of Dukes for Root Control Services per section due da, two dash four five eight I sole source for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Bless you. Item G, a resolution approving the demolition of the Johnson Motors water tank by Alliance Concrete Sawing and Drilling, um, for LLC per section two dash four five eight I seven Goodway favor, favor, uh, waiver for not to exceed amount of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item H, an ordinance adopting a second amendment to the annual budget and supplemental appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May first, 2023. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three. Item I, resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four five eight I seven Goodway, Good Faith Waiver, and approving the purchase of a 2023 Ford Explorer from Curry Motors in an amount not to exceed forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item J, a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four five eight I seven Good Faith Waiver, and approving the purchase of a 2023 Ford Interceptor Utility from Curry Motors in amount not to exceed forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item K, a resolution authorizing the procurement of paper and office supplies for fiscal year 2024 from Office Plus Solutions and Supplies Warehouse Direct through OMI NIA Partners Joint Purchasing Contract in the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item L, a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two four five eight I seven Goodway fa- waiver, and approving the purchase of a 2023 Ford Explorer Interceptor from Curry Motors in the amount not to exceed forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item M, a resolution approving amendments to the City of Waukegan's grant policy. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. Item P, an ordinance adopting a second amendment to the annual budget and supplemental appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May first, 2022. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September eighteenth, 2023. With there being no questions to those motions, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
So moved.
Alderman Newsom, a second? Yeah, any, I mean, any discussion on those? I think everybody was fine with those.
A is on the omnibus?
No, A is not on the omnibus. It's item, it's items A, B, um, N, O, Q, and R that were pulled. Roll call, please.
Who was the second?
Florian.
Thank you. Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A, can I have a first?
First.
A second? Okay, Alderman Turner, Alderman Bolton. Um, this is an ordinance increasing the number of Class E restaurant liquor licenses by one, um, by La, Jahaba, is that how you say it? Hyba, okay. LLC at one twenty North Genesee Street, and this matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September fifth, 2023. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
Um, I know this changed hands a while back, so are they able to work under the old license in the meantime?
No, this was more than a fifty percent change in ownership, they would have had to apply for a new license.
So since they bought, they've been open, right?
I don't know.
I think they have been. Were they serving alcohol without a license? They weren't open?
They weren't serving alcohol. I was there last week.
Good job. Congratulations to whoever's doing that. Not everybody follows the rules.
Um, any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman, absent. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, can I have a first and a second on, gonna wait a couple minutes?
Can I hold this over?
Can I have a second to hold it over?
We need a, we would need a motion to hold and a second.
Yeah, so, so we've got a first, Alderman Florian, a second by Alderman Newsom to hold it over. Which one are we on? Item B. And I believe that the reason that they want to hold it over is, I still believe they're not compliant, am I correct? Okay, um, item, I'm sorry, is it going to be held to the next meeting? When do you want it held to?
Um, um, they're here.
Oh, okay.
So would you guys like to come up and we can talk about this a little bit, or do you want to?
This is for the property of two 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 six North Northern Avenue, right?
It was brought to the Planning Department staff's attention that the fence that was installed didn't look compliant with the city's ordinance. Um, my staff went out and looked, and in fact, it is not. And then when we looked back at our system, we saw that there was no inspection done for the post holes. Um, and so the fence placement wasn't approved, and it's more than four feet high in various places. There are pictures attached in board docs and executive content, for those of you who would like to see those if you haven't already.
So our next meeting is in two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah, October second.
Two weeks. So do you think you can get the fence into compliance within two weeks?
Um, let me just speak to him, I didn't realize this was an issue, because we had been checking with, I've, I've been emailing the, um, inspector, trying to get statuses on all of this, and I know he does have a permit for everything that he had to do, and has been.
But getting a permit and then getting the inspections is two different things. I mean, you can get a permit, but then you have to follow through with the inspections.
And we've been following up with emails to the inspector, but I had not heard that there was any issue until right now.
Is that Mr. Sallis?
No, there was a female inspector, I believe, um.
Well, yeah, he's going to come up and talk about it.
Um, so what's the status?
So the status is, they did get a permit, but there has been no inspections. And as far as I know, I don't know about any communications between them and the inspector, but nobody from our staff has gone out to do any kind of inspections. And our inspector, Erica Taylor, the code compliance, she's the one who brought it to my attention that they put a six-foot tall fence in the front yard, and they painted it white and blue or something like that, yeah.
So.
At this point, they'll need to get inspections, and if it's not done correctly, they'll need to bring it into compliance in order for them to finish up the permit.
So this, can that be done in two weeks?
It can be, and it's up to the owners to get the, to get us out there.
So, I got a question. So why is it only four feet and not six feet, like every normal fence?
Because it's in the front.
I'm sorry?
It's in the front of the property. You can't put six feet in the front.
Yeah, so in the front yard, it has to be four-footed, and it has to be at least fifty percent open.
Okay.
Yeah.
So every, every fence that's built here cannot have a six-foot fence in the front yard?
Not in the front yard setback, correct? Yeah.
And isn't there a certain distance on the side even that you have to go for, or can you do six on the side?
So it's from the front yard setback going back, they can do six foot. But anything in front of that, that has to be four-footed, fifty percent open. So, any other questions?
So, so, uh, they're asking for a change in zoning from CR to residential conservation, does, whatever. Change in zoning status. So regardless of what the zoning is, that ordinance would apply.
That's correct.
So why don't we just go ahead and let them move their zoning, and they still going to have to comply with the code regardless of what the zoning is?
Well, but the reason this was held over originally is because there was a lot of code violations on the property already, and they promised they were going to fix all of that, and then they created a whole new one by putting this fence up and not following the rules.
Got it. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Did you look at the picture?
Yeah.
So do we want to go to October second, or do you want to give it a little longer for them to come in to client?
I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to say, though, in comparison to what it was, he's done a great deal of work. He's not a irresponsible.
Does it follow the ordinances?
You don't know how many calls I've gotten from the neighbors about the fence. It's, it's really pretty obnoxious. Have you seen it?
No, I haven't.
You should look at the pictures. It's white with blue squiggles all over it, six feet high in the front.
I'm not sure why there's squiggles. I do know, though, that I believe that this is a separate situation from changing of the zoning, because it's getting costly for him, for me to come back every time to the meetings as an attorney and charging him my fee, to be here each time. And it's a separate situation. It's a matter of changing the zoning, but you also have a building violation section that if he is breaking rules, then he can get a ticket for that under separate, a separate issue. And so I'm, I'm not disrespecting this, believe me, I, I do believe that it has to.
I have a question too, regarding that property. That's the property where it has a big white fence and has the squiggles on it? That's, that's the property?
Yes.
Oh, I've had, I heard complaints from the neighbor as well, because of that. So I definitely would like to see, you know.
Well, I, I'm not saying that he should not, you know, work on this problem or address the situation at all. And I don't mean to sound disrespectful in any way.
But aren't you annexing for advantages for the city, is that it? No?
No, different, different rezoning.
Okay.
Pardon me. This property is already in the city. Um, it was never rezoned from CR to the proper residential zoning, I don't know why. But it's currently zone CR Conservation Recreation, which is the zoning that new annexations take. Um, the property next door is vacant land, so it could have been some confusion with that, I don't really know why. But, um, the zoning needs to be changed. However, granting that zoning change is a privilege, so issue understood. Um, but it's also a privilege that you're granting is giving the zoning change. So it's, it's an authority that you have to not change it.
Well, I have a first and a second to hold it over. So it's getting held over.
So, uh, what, what question?
Okay. Alderman Guzman, hold on, hold on, because I need to call on you first. Um, so we do have the first and the second, we just need a date of when they're going to be ready. So when do you guys want to come back? Two weeks or four weeks? Well, they can, they can.
I can interpret.
Chief.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Before, before, I just want to mention this, I had a complaint where the, the owner on the side wanted to make sure that the fence was done at the correct property line, because I just want to make sure that everything is compliant on that end.
So, so Alderman, that would be inspected, that would be inspected during one of our inspections. So our inspector would go out there and check to make sure it is on the property, property line or within the property line.
That done.
And then if zoning was changed, what would, would their stuff be approved or not be approved?
The current fence would not be approved with the zoning change. This fence cannot be approved as it stands.
Oh, yeah, no, no, six feet is way too high for the front, yeah.
It's six feet in many places, it's also completely opaque, and it needs to be at least 50% transparent.
But we already have a first and a second to hold it over. We're just trying to get a date of whether you want it October 2nd, or whether you want it, what's the next date in October?
Well, I'm just gonna say from a procedural standpoint, a motion to hold over to a date certain is really a motion that postpones, that requires a vote. If the council does not want to hold it over, and you want to vote on the issue, then you can vote no to the holdover. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Jorge will like to make a comment to City Council. Before, before I start, um, yeah, good night, greetings, good evening.
Yo acabo de comprar la propiedad.
He just purchased a property? Uh, there was no fence, there wasn't anything on there? To respect with everyone here, my neighbors, I have two neighbors next adjacent to me that are racist towards me, and they are Caucasian. And in front of the property, I have another racist person? There have been eight inspectors at my property? That my attorney says are they good or bad? She's asking me that question. Uh, he did mention a few of the inspectors, and he is tired of being targeted, and. Isabel. Oh, and she spoke with Isabel? Isabel advised him that he could build the fence six feet in the front, and, I mean, four feet in the front and six feet beyond that. So when he put up the fence, he did it around 50 feet total. And when he put the fence up, somebody came to council and spoke against that work. He wants to know who the inspector is.
Yeah, so I, I will address that. Sir, you're saying that your neighbors are racist, but your neighbors have a legitimate argument that you didn't follow the ordinance and you didn't follow the law. You just said that Isabel from Planning and Zoning told you it had to be four feet in the front and six feet in the back, and then you did six feet throughout the whole property. So, that's a problem that you're not listening.
Can I also ask him why he didn't have the?
Just wanted to translate to him.
Just wanted to translate, so, that there is a, que hay un, hay un, como funciona la ciudad, hay un proceso de cómo mantener las regulaciones, y eso es lo que Isabel fue lo que le dijo que ponga cuatro en frente y seis alrededor.
Eso, eso me did I. Yo hablé con Tony, y me pu, el Tony, el inspector Tony llegó, bueno, ya no sé qué creerle, porque todos buscan otra forma de, de arreglar las cosas.
He mentioned inspector stopped by and told him. There, he, he feels like all these inspectors who are going are trying to find excuses to find him.
Okay, why don't we do this, to be fair, why don't we hold this over until, we'll give it till November? Because there's a chance that you're gonna end up in adjudication, or we're gonna, and I don't know where you're gonna be with this, or you're, or you're going to have to change your fence. But how about we hold it over until the first meeting of November, and that gives you time to get into compliance? And, you know. So that first meeting in November. Is November 6th. So, we have a. We have a motion to hold over until November 6th. Um, we've got a first and a second on that, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
What are we voting on?
Holding it over.
We're holding it over until November 6th.
We're not supposed to vote on that, so.
We're actually in the middle of a vote, so.
Alderman Turner? Abstain?
He's abstaining.
Alderman Donahurst?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion pass.
So, sir, you can say, you know, what you want, but it's being held over until November 6th.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so that was, I gotta find my place again, I'm sorry. That was N as in Nancy. No, it's not, it's, um. That was B. We're going to N now. And can I even, uh, first and a second, okay. Alderman, I need people back at the, on this matter now. Item N, can I have a first and a second on?
So moved, so.
Alderman Bolton, who was the second? Alderman Newsom. Okay, this is an ordinance amending Division 2, Article 6 regarding the change orders in the city of Waukegan. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on September 18th, 2023. Questions to the motion, Alderman Guzman, you pulled this?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, the reason I pulled this is I, I, I think it's, it's just because I think the language is a little vague and it needs to be a little more cleared up. I agree that they shouldn't be coming back for like a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever for the same project. I, I feel the vague, the language of, uh, the legal language is a little vague, it needs to be improved a little bit more.
Is there a way to amend that? Well, I'm not sure what you want in there, but I'll let.
I'll just, I, we talked about this in committee, I think, yeah, the Alderman's point is, well, this, what should be known by the council is that this goes along with the purchasing policy, letter O on the agenda. So if we make changes to this, the purchasing policy would have to be changed as well to follow. But essentially, what, what this ordinance is amending is, it's mimicking mostly what we see in the Illinois statute for public works projects. So any, uh, change orders at 50% or more would have to be rebid and come back to council. The only thing that it's doing is it's giving, uh, staff a little bit more latitude to not have to come back to council for, um, in, increase in contract prices of less than 50%, but not exceeding the mayor's authority of 25%. So, for small one-off change orders that are like $4,000, let's say, or $5,000, something that's a small amount, you would not have to come back to council for approval because it would be within the mayor's spending authority. But any large increases of 50% or more, or, um, beyond the mayor's spending authority, of course, have to come back from council. We actually strengthened the language here by saying the bid must be resubmitted if it's a public works contract, because then you're violating the Illinois law, actually, for CUM Act.
And one of the, one of the reasons that we've been addressing this is because, as you've seen, you've had change orders on a number of things. Some of it is the fact that, as many of you know, prices are changing on a regular basis on things. But when we go out for bid, we have to put in probably a certain percentage of knowing that things will change. But having umpteen change orders come back to you, I don't think is fair either.
Yes, I agree with that, ma'am, but there's still certain language, that's why I, I, I want the language to be a little bit more specific on the whole, um, let's see, what, what was the example of, if I remember correctly, like, uh, different departments grabbing certain contractors and then moving along?
That's different than, that's the pol, the purchasing policy, this is just the code.
Yes, but if we don't change this one, we can't change the other one.
Well, not, there's, this provision is in the policy, but there's more in the policy than just this. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that if we change this language in this code section, the policy has to be changed no matter what. But if you don't change this, then we can move on to the policy, you may have other changes from the policy, but.
Okay, so if we move this one on forward, and then we could change O, but then wouldn't that affect N?
It wouldn't necessarily affect, but everyone would just have to keep in mind, this ordinance language is part of the policy.
If, if I may, you know, this policy as it's written was put in place for a reason, right? So that we would have oversight on the spin, right? So what you, what you're proposing is to set up a situation where some individual could initiate multiple spins that don't hit the bar to come before the council. Exactly, and that's why I want the, the language changed, so that would not be a problem at all.
It's possible to do that now, though. I mean, well, the way things are currently, we, our staff could be doing that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, so now we can fix it.
This ord, this ordinance, as far as I can see, wouldn't affect that either way.
There you go.
So what you're looking at in that scenario is mentioned in the policy, where we talk about, um, what staff should be aware of, you know, same person but formulates multiple LLCs and tries to bid under four different LLCs on the same bid, but it's really the same person, right? So we, we did provide for a stringing, it's called stringing, we provided for that in the policy. I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, Alderman Guzman, you're wanting to strengthen that language in the policy.
Yes, and I thought if I could, if, um, it connects N and O together.
That's a different issue than this, though, in my opinion.
So if N moves forward, then O has to change also.
If N moves forward.
I, I mean, if O moves forward, then N has to change also.
Not necessarily. But if N, if, if you approve N pursuant to these suggested amendments, that part of O would have to remain unless.
I just don't like the loopholes.
I have a question too.
I like them closed.
Uh, so within a project, with this new, within a project, cause now from what I understand, from what I understood, with these two coming together, within, within a project, i- if there's change orders within that one project, we don't, it doesn't have to come to vote, right?
So it wouldn't have to come to vote for the same project if it's under, uh, less than a 50% increase of the project, but still under 25,000 total. So it would still be within the mayor's spending authority.
Okay.
If it's more than 50% of the contract and, uh, in excess of 25,000, it comes back to council. And then in some instances, if it's a public works contract, it has to be rebid.
So you're saying it's still, um, it's still at the mayor's spending authority at 25,000?
But you guys are all briefed on that anyway. You know, I mean, when we, if that happened, you're, you're briefed on that during your automatic briefings.
That, that's, I just want to make a few things clear, that's one.
Yes, so what, essentially what we're seeking, well, what the staff is seeking to do is not have to come back to council for every little one-off change order that doesn't affect the whole of the contract or doesn't violate the 50%.
See, that part I'm okay with. The part I'm not okay with is if a project says, okay, you have a project, one project, well, it's gonna cost you 35,000 or 45 or whatever number it is, now, you know what? We have to go to council, they might not approve this, so now, let's not do, oh, let's not move to one project, let's do three projects.
That, so, that is still incumbent upon staff, and staff does, they're in charge of bidding out what the RFPs, that goes through not only, it goes through the finance department, it also comes to the law department to approve the RFPs, so.
So it could happen now, as long as a chain of people allow it to happen. So if we change the language a little bit, it won't.
It's, I mean, that's not really allowed as it is, that's not, that's not allowed.
And just so you know, Alderman Guzman, I look at every single check that's written every single time we meet. And if there were three checks to the same bidder or same, or, I would notice that, and I would bring it to everyone's attention. I look at them every single time, the whole checklist. You can ask the finance department, I'm the only Alderman up here that does that, and I send them a letter, an email every time, asking questions about what was this for, what was this for, why'd we pay for this? Why, if there were three checks to the same person, I would catch that immediately.
And I remember quite a few years ago, we had that happen, and you and I both brought that as Alderman.
So what happens when you leave? Exactly. There we go.
You're gonna have to take it over.
Yeah.
No, or we can change it now.
Um, that's actually something that is a, a good check and balance of, you know, you should be checking those and making sure, yeah. So, what do we have on N, what do we, what do we want to do with that? So, there's a first and a second, do the roll call on it? Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to do the roll?
Alderman Guzman?
No.
Martinez?
No.
Felix?
No.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
No.
Donahurst?
No.
Florian?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
No's have it.
Item O, can I have a first and a second on that? Uh, item O.
So moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna hold this one over, can I have a first and a second to hold it over?
So moved.
Okay, who was the first one? Um, Alderman Guzman, second was Alderman Martinez. Yeah, we're gonna hold that over to the next meeting. Yep. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix? Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Point of order, I think Robert Cruz's order doesn't require a vote on this, so until we stretch that out, uh, or suss that out, I'm just gonna abstain, not vote on that.
Is that a yes or a no, sir?
He's abstaining.
He's abstaining, okay.
We don't have to take a vote, it's not required.
Donahurst?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item Q, can I have a first and a second?
I'll make the first.
A second?
Okay, Alderman Turner and Alderman Bolton. This is an ordinance amending Section 21-122 of the Code of Ordinances, adding limited parking in front of home daycare centers. This matter was presented, uh, to the Code Revisions Appeals and Negotiations Committee on September 5th, 2023, which provided a negative recommendation. So if you vote for this, you're voting, um, negatively, right?
No, you're voting to approve.
You have to have a motion, um, so it was a motion to approve, and there was a second, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, please clarify. So, there was a motion to approve?
No, there was not a motion to approve this, this was a motion. Noel, can you clarify this one for us? Cause was that part of the affirmative?
The motion is to amend the ordinance.
Alderman Turner was the first, Alderman Bolton was the second.
So that is a, a motion to approve an ordinance amending the section?
Right.
So it, it's a motion to approve? Approve limited parking?
Yeah, this is a.
This is where we want to put.
Noel, can you come up, is that, is that correct, is that how it was worded in there? I thought it was worded differently, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
No, Kelly's correct, the ordinance is in the affirmative, so the committee voted against.
Okay. Any questions to that, how we've explained it?
So a no is to...
It's the same as usual. No means you don't want the ordinance. Yes means you want the ordinance.
And the ordinance to limit parking.
What happened to the...
Wait, wait, wait. Limit parking, correct?
So this would, what this is amending right now is to give parking in front of home daycare centers.
Upon request, it's going to be handled like a handicap request, like any other. So it's not a blanket to give every home daycare a restricted parking, but those who would ask or apply for it, they would have to pay for the signage, and it would be on a case-by-case basis. It's not a blanket across all home daycares.
The ordinance that was proposed that's in the packet, the amendment says it would amend the restricted parking section of the code, which is 21-122, and it would add home daycare drop-off, pickup only, 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and 1:00 AM, I'm sorry, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, would be the designated hours. And it states owners of home daycare centers may apply to the licensing division of the building department to obtain a restricted parking sign in front of their building.
Right.
Where a restricted parking sign is posted in front of a home daycare, parking is prohibited during the designated hours at set forth herein. That's how it would amend, that's how it's proposed.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yes, may apply to the licensing division.
I have a question.
Alderman Florian?
When they put up the signs, are the hours going to be on the sign? Because like, how do I know as the average citizen, if there's the sign there, that it's only certain hours? And we've already determined, I asked the chief the last time if there was going to be enforcement of this, and him and the mayor both said probably not. So we're kind of creating something that can't be enforced anyway. But I'm curious if, I have someone who lives across the street from me that has a daycare, and the sign suddenly goes up, but are the hours going to be posted on the sign?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
We can do it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
One more.
Yes.
Whoever applies for this, they're paying for everything, correct?
Yes.
How much are we charging for the permit?
It's not, it's not a...
I don't, there's nothing in this ordinance that creates a fee. I don't know if this could be provided for in the fee ordinance, Commissioner. Are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, that's what we talked about. We talked about a $75 fee, like the handicap.
But it's got to cover the fees for the signs.
It has to be more than that.
So the last time we were talking about this, it was discussed about the same fee as the handicap. I do believe, though, when we were talking to Public Works Director, it's going to cost us closer to $90 per sign. So if the council would like to charge something more than that, or that money...
Actually, I would.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Actually, I would like to charge more than that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it charges the employee to put the sign up, the sign itself, the striping, what else?
I believe that's where they came up with the $90 per.
That's what the $90 is covered.
Yeah.
So the sign, how much does it cost?
I'm not sure. Chris, do you remember how much the signs were?
$40.
Like the parking signs?
Evan?
No, how much do they cost to make?
I don't know. I haven't read down.
It's $80 per sign. It's in the memo.
See, there you go. So $90 is way too low. Plus, you've got to pay $80 for the sign. How much does an employee make? Let's say $30 an hour, so that's 110.
The employees work regardless. We don't, so they're going to get paid.
I think it should be a little bit more.
About $100.
How about 150?
100.
So Commissioner, is that a fee that you can administratively assign, or do we need to amend the code for...
I would recommend we put it in the ordinance, in that ordinance. That way, when people ask us questions about it, we can have some kind of an ordinance to back it up and not just the building department, licensing department decided that's the fee.
Right.
So is, I guess, the question is, was there a motion to amend the proposed ordinance to include a fee, and for how much?
150.
How much?
150.
125.
140.
125.
Just wanted to let you guys know, your license was, their license was approved, right? The new one, the HIBRA or something like that?
The LEC.
Yeah. Your license was approved, so you guys don't have to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless you guys want to. If you guys want to, it's fine. But it was approved.
So we need to get back to amending. What is the price that you want to put in there?
First, I need a motion to amend, and then for how much?
So moved.
But I don't, I need a motion, and then for how much?
A motion to amend.
Second.
For how much?
150.
125. So there's a motion to amend for 150. Do we have a second?
I need a second.
So motion by Alderman Guzman, second by Alderman Martinez, to amend. So we take a roll call on the amendment to the ordinance. Robert's rolls.
150 was the number. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am, for the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
That would be a motion to pass the ordinance as amended.
As amended.
I need a first and a second.
Second.
I'll make the first.
Alderman Turner?
I have a question.
Second?
I just want to make sure reflective listening. So we're talking about anyone that has childcare facility. They have to apply for the special parking.
If they want it, if they want it, and it's a home childcare facility, if they want it...
It's not mandatory.
No.
I think the good word is the ability to apply. So if they want it, they can. They don't have to get it.
May apply.
They may apply.
Okay, so I need a motion to hear the amendment. I'm sorry, as amended, sorry. But there was no second, or were you making it Alderman Bolton?
No, Turner and Bolton.
Okay, Turner and Bolton. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item R, can I have a first and a second?
I'll make the first.
A second?
Alderman Turner and Alderman Bolton. This is an ordinance amending and restating ordinance 230-113, fixing the salaries for employees and non-union employees regarding step increases. This matter was presented to the Code Revisions Appeals and Negotiations Committee on September 5th, 2023. Questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm understanding those that are union, they're not given steps. Because I wanted, basically, explain the process, how that works when it comes to non-union getting promotion and steps. Did I ask that correctly?
Okay. Chief, do you want to explain it, since this is an HR function? But generally speaking, your unions already have their contracts, so this is your non-union.
Yeah, bargaining members do not get the opportunity for the step increase. This is for non-bargaining units that give them the opportunity to go to between step one, two, or three.
So this is, you know, bringing on your department heads or your non-union employees?
Yes, bringing on, as a conversation I have with one of the alderpersons, this is bringing on, when you're bringing on new individuals, there's an opportunity, if they are department heads, to be placed in any step within their tier. A tier is based from the different positions within the city. There's different tiers, tier one, two, three, four, and five. You get certain individuals that are in tier one, for example. The step one of that tier is 100,000, and the top tier, tier 15, would be 150. This ordinance allows anyone that is a department head to be started anywhere in those steps, if there is a justification or qualifications to do so. And for non-department heads, step one through step three.
I have a question.
This has been in place for many years. I do not know. I think the HR director did go over that dating back to the early 2000s.
I have a question. So it is up to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think the issue was that the second part of it was that the mayor has the discretion to put that person anywhere in that step. It could be more than three steps.
No, non-department heads, it's only step one, two, or three. Department level leadership positions, yes, anywhere within that step.
So it could be more than three steps.
For department heads only. For example, we just were negotiating our HR director position and finance position, trying to do the recruitment, and when we reached out to our contractors, that step for a finance director starts at 127 at the time. Our consultants told us that that step range needs to be higher for a city this size, and it was supposed to be at 140,000 to 175,000. Without that ability, the mayor would have to negotiate with the individual she's planning on bringing in, and then wait for council approval to be approved. And we could not even make some of the benefits packages in the time without a limit or restrictions with the two prior candidates that we had for one of these two positions.
I have a question. So is it up to the discretion of the hiring manager to place that person in any tier that they would want? Like, let's say, for example, they jumped up all the way to tier five as a new hire. Is that something that the supervisor, is something that they have, that they can do, or...
That's usually up to the director. Any one of the department heads can, the non-department heads' positions, that's up to the interviewer and the team, and they consult with the director of that department, and then they make that recommendation.
Because one of the question with that is that, let's say, for example, you've got an employee who's been doing the same job for five years, who's a tier two, and you've got another person that's maybe more qualified, and you're going to start that person who just got there at a tier five? Is that, I mean, how, can that, something like that, does that happen?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Like, if I've been there, let's say, use me as the example. I've been doing the same job for five years, right now, I'm at a tier three. Now, you get another individual who is going to get hired, but we're going to make him tier five, where I've been there more longer, had more seniority, probably more experience, but yet I'm still at a tier three.
Correct.
But that would depend on your performance reviews and everything else, too. There's a whole tracking. So we now do performance reviews. When I came into office, we had never done performance review, so that's instrumental. But I'm going to ask corporate counsel to comment on the salary ordinance as well, because if I remember correctly, most cities don't have one. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's a little unusual. This reads as more of like what you would see as an internal policy. So typically, what you'd see in a city is each department, each year, works with the budget manager to work out budget classifications for each one of their positions. And it's up to the department head to stay within that budget. They obviously cannot exceed the budget, period, because council votes on the budget, and they have to stay within the budget. And it's more of their discretion. Usually, though, HR will pipe up and say something about putting someone at a level that's unfair, because what you really want to avoid doing is hiring more than the midpoint, if you can help it. You know, sometimes you have to go beyond because of the hiring conditions and the climate you're faced with. But to see it codified is, it is strange to me that it's codified, but here we are.
Also, to answer your question a little better, you don't move from tiers. The position, the classification, is within a tier for each position, okay? It's the steps that you are referencing. And again, the director can only recommend up to step three. So they could not make it up to step five, okay?
So basically, you could, so basically, here's what you can do, okay? This is what it comes down to. Basically, a director says, well, you know what? You guys are doing a good job. I'm going to give you guys three steps. So there you go. There's a $5,000, or $10,000, or $15,000, or $20,000 raise. Absolutely not, without council.
But that doesn't, they don't make that sole decision. I'm actually going to have...
They, they give the recommendation, it goes to HR, and then any mayor that could come in here, sure, no problem. Here we go.
Yeah, that, they really have to justify. Bob, can you come up? And Noel, can you come up? Because I'd like you, because you both have, you know this forward and backward. But Noel has been a director for a long time and deals with this all the time. We just don't hand out step increases, and that's what I think this is kind of inferring.
Well, I think I got an alderman briefing that was wanting to get some step increases, a really high one.
I don't know about...
That was our, that was a recommendation for a union, an agreement to keep personnel that was not...
I was not told it was a union thing or anything like that, but those are union...
And that has not been approved.
Has not.
And I can just say, this is probably hard to, one of the newer people in the city, that it's hard to get that justification, even, she came in with a master's degree in emergency management, perfect candidate, and she still started at step one. And I couldn't change her to another level. HR last year, when I tried to position the position to a higher level, they didn't think it had the justification for it, even with her degrees. My employee came in at the lowest step in that tier that she is.
So if, so my thing is this, okay, so...
And in the future...
So if it used to be 100, if that position used to start at 110,000, and that was back in the days, five, 10 years, or whatever, whatever, when this was created, and now we're at 2023, and that position needs to start at 140 or 150, why doesn't it get updated, and that's where it starts?
Every year, the salary ordinance gets updated.
Yeah, if I may, that's where the budget comes in, because no matter what, so no matter what the staff does, they cannot exceed the budget for that position, because there wouldn't be the money to give. It won't be, well, the money literally wouldn't be there.
Because I'm okay about saying, okay, HR makes 150, okay? Let's just say that, okay? But if that's where it starts, that's where it starts.
The problem is, so even if, let's say 150 was at the very end of the budgeted position for that person, director of HR, and I don't know what the salary is, but let's say the very highest end budgeted is 150. If that person comes in at 150, then that person has to know that that's it, that they've capped out already.
But don't they go through the steps?
They wouldn't be eligible.
Get a yearly raise or...
It wouldn't be eligible, because there's a minimum and a maximum.
Can we call for the vote?
Hey, can I ask one more thing, Alderman? Mayor? The reason is, is because there's different classifications in that tier. If you move that tier up to 150, the different classifications will all have to start at that rate that you said. So that's the reason why, there's a spectrum there for each person in that classification.
Because there's tiers and there's steps.
And, yep.
Yeah.
If I can address Alderman Guzman's question, when I first was called up, which was, if a department head wants to advance an individual staff person on their team, we don't have the ability as department heads to recommend that a staff person be moved all the way up. We can request two steps, and that's the maximum. So we can, as Bob alluded to, we could make a request in the subsequent budget for a higher position and move that person. And there's language in the salary ordinance about where they land on the new steps in the new tier, if they get moved to a higher position, under the promotion section of the salary ordinance. But if I wanted to advance one of my staff people within this fiscal year steps, if I have it in my budget, which finance would check as part of the process, I can make a written request with justification, submit that to HR. HR would review it and make a consideration. They would check with finance and determine whether there was room in my budget, which I would also have to justify. about where they land on the new steps in the new tier, if they get moved to a higher position, under the promotion section of the salary ordinance. But if I wanted to advance one of my staff people within this fiscal year steps, if I have it in my budget, which finance would check as part of the process, I can make a written request with justification, submit that to HR. HR would review it and make a consideration. They would check with finance and determine whether there was room in my budget, which I would also have to justify. And then they would advance that to the mayor's office for a final determination. But I can only request two steps. Anything above that won't even be considered.
And that's, that's steps, not a tier?
That's steps within the same tier.
A tier.
So each position is in a tier, each title, and you can only go horizontally across steps. Each step is two percent higher than the step before it.
Okay, there we go.
And then the whole ordinance chart gets updated each year when we do the salary ordinance, and you make a determination about a cost of living increase. If there's a zero increase for cost of living, the chart stays the same. If there's a one percent, the whole chart moves one percent. So your, your bottom entry point, your step one would be at...
So the tiers need to change?
Well, the tiers are, are the ranking of positions. So the department heads are at the top, in the lowest tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. And the more entry-level, non-union personnel are at the bottom tiers, and I don't even remember what number, six, seven, eight. So it, it's organized that way. So the highest positions are in the top tiers, the lower, non-union positions are in the bottom tiers, and then there are sixteen steps.
So who created the tiers at each position? So let's say, for your position, who created your tier? So why wasn't it, and then why wasn't it updated on the 2023, fix your budget? So somebody created the tier, somebody said, "This position is worth this much, and he needs to do these steps."
The last time that was done as a wholesale thing was, I'm not sure I'm gonna get the year right, but I wanna say it was 2012.
There you go.
Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve.
So here's where we are with this problem.
We did a salary study. The HR department contracted a professional to do a salary study, look at how our salaries in the city of Waukegan compared to other communities. They made recommendations. Some of those recommendations were accepted, some were not. The salary ordinance then was updated, and the tiers were reclassified. And we used to only have eight steps, now we have sixteen. That was one of those recommendations to expand the number of steps in each tier.
Is there an urgency to pass this now? Urgent, does it have to be passed?
The staff is not recommending a changing of the ordinance.
Well, I'm just asking, it seems like a lot of discussion. Maybe we should hold it over, give Alderman Guzman the time to meet with some other folk, and get all of his questions answered, get educated on the process. I like it.
But we wanna put a definite date on this, because we're going into our budget year. We're starting in October to do that.
Are you okay with it?
If Alderman Guzman has more questions, I would recommend we hold it over. If Alderman Guzman does not have more questions, I recommend we vote on it.
Do you have more questions, or do you wanna hold it over?
I just don't like the, too many steps being jumped without council approval. That's the only issue I'm having.
Most of this is two. Isn't that what you said? They can only go to four?
A different department was recommended four steps, what I was told.
But it's not happening.
I understand that, Mayor, but they could have happened. If, if somebody was sitting in your seat, it could have happened.
It can't, that could not happen.
Yeah, it can't happen, because there's a system, that's what this is about, is a system to protect that. So two steps is the most that HR can do, I can do. I can't approve more than two steps.
I don't know if you know yet, but this place is like high school, and everybody talks. And if one department head moved someone four steps, don't you think all those other department heads would be on it like that? Like, how come she got four steps? I want my guy to have four steps. You would know in a minute that there was a problem.
But why can't they wait for their yearly raises?
Why can't we just take a vote?
And that's it?
Yeah, let's just do a vote. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
So just so everyone understands, so what, so I means what, name means?
So yes means you're voting on the amendment as proposed in the ordinance. No means you're not voting to amend the ordinance.
So to amend the ordinance?
Yes.
What does that mean? Exactly, what do we mean?
So the suggested amendment is that it has to come to council for any step.
Okay.
And if you don't want it to have to come to council for every step, which delays promotions and, you know, that kind of thing, then you're voting no to this. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Yep. So if you...
So to leave it as is?
If you want to leave it as it is now, you're voting no. If you want to change it so that all of these come to council, you're voting yes. Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Guzman?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez?
Yes.
Alderman Felix?
Yes.
Alderman Newsom?
No.
Alderman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Donaworth?
Yes.
Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Bolton?
No.
Yes is heaven.
And I do do reviews on all my employees, and have since 2017, so that's not quite a correct statement.
But across the city, we now do them. Individual departments may have done them, but there was no policy of everybody doing them.
No, but as a department head, I did do it since 2017.
Yep. Okay, that being said, it's Alderman time. Alderman Guzman?
Good evening. Thanks who stuck around, not very few, but, okay. I wanna say, I didn't get to go to the parades, but I heard there were, it was a very good turnout. Unfortunately, it rained in the morning, but it's still turned out to be a good, good time for all. Okay, there, there was a couple incidents that got deterred by our Waukegan's finest. Thank you, Chief, for, for your people and the great job that they do out there. I did see two, two things wrong that I would like to be addressed for the next parades or anything. Make sure they get off those floats. Once they're done, the parade is done, they need to get off those floats. They don't need to be right around city streets on those floats and drinking and all that stuff. I witnessed two floats on that. So let's stay off those floats, guys, it's just for parade purposes, and then that's it. Other than that, I guess I'm good.
Alderman Martinez?
All right, I have the same sentiments that Alderman Guzman had. I understand it was a great parade. I couldn't make it for personal reasons, but I did hear that it was a great success. It's evidenced by the many thousands and thousands of people that actually showed up in our downtown. So as the mayor said earlier, putting our heads together, working as one, anything is attainable. And that's, that's the way we should look at it. I also want to thank Pastor Jorge Bonilla for his ovocation tonight. And I also wanna echo what the mayor said earlier about the homecoming parade that will be held this Friday at 5:30. We will be meeting at the Brookside Campus. It will be held in our ward, in our third ward, so I encourage all my constituents in our ward to please support them, have signs, come on out, greet them. This is something that has never been done, and I feel kind of bad that we are breaking tradition to where, back then, we, I remember lining up on Washington Street on a Saturday and enjoying the facilities. But unfortunately, these are changing times, and I can surely understand that. But I did also want to, on request of a lot of my constituents, I do want to, I wanna state the route of the streets that we will be going down. We will be going down, it will start, like I said, at the Brookside Campus, and then it will be going down to Flossmore Avenue. And then after Flossmore, it'd be going down to University, and then to Tiffany Drive. Tiffany Drive, we're making that left there to Lydia, and then we will be making a right to North Martin, and then back to Brookside Avenue in the parking lot. Again, I also would like to thank Ms. Maggie, I don't wanna chop up her last name, Strachnick, who reached out to me, and she put a lot of hard work into it, so I also want to thank her for that. And again, I am so honored to be chosen as a grand marshal. I, you know, I'm very honored. As a, as a past Bulldog, it is a great honor, and I'm truly, truly thankful, and I thank everyone who thought of me for that. But it is this Friday, and it starts at 5:30. Again, it would be nice to see everybody there. I also invite all of the Aldermen to be there, and all the other elected officials that can make it. All right, and also just wanna, real quickly here, talk about the fall project that is going on. I think we're still planning. I did talk to Engineer Jesus. He did say that we are still in the works for the fall work on Berwick Avenue with the, with the pipes. I've been getting a lot of calls there, so we look forward to that. I've also been meeting with small business owners. We are trying to create a committee where we can get everybody together. But unfortunately, due to time constraints, we're having a hard time to get all the business owners. But I've had visited many owners of businesses. They are all aboard for it. They all want some change. They all wanna come together in unity, and so I look forward to that, so I will be working on that. And so it, it will take a little bit of time, so I just ask for everyone's diligence on that. Also, on complaints, all right, this is with the school system having sports in the evening, you know, on, on these fields up on Mercury, on Brookside and Pioneer, and the other field is on Brookside and North Metropolitan. Illegal parking that's going on, you got pedestrians walking, running across the street. I had an incident the other day where, through a complaint, they were saying there was a bus that was illegally parked, and I actually went there, and then I was able to witness that. I don't wanna go into details, but I was taken back that this person, the bus driver, who was supposed to be professional, who was supposed to be transferring our students, had the audacity to not wanna move that car that was illegally parked. But I reached out to at least seven heads, also including the Waukegan school system, all the department heads, and I sent out that, that email last night, like 10 o'clock. And I am very impressed that everybody responded, and they all wanna be part of this problem. So I commend each and every one of you guys for responding quickly, for all the department heads. But that is, that is a big problem that we are experiencing in our ward. And for all my constituents, I understand, I, I'm on it. We will be putting up signs up. I will be diligent. I will make sure that I go out there, make sure that these people are parking accordingly to where they're parked, making sure that the security, safety officers are doing their job, and just being vigilant, and hopefully we can get some change there on that side. One more thing I do like to say, that's about it. If you need to get ahold of me, my number's eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. That's all I got, but also wanna let my neighbors know, please be safe, be mindful, and more importantly, let's all be good neighbors. Thank you.
Alderman Felix?
Thank you, everyone, for staying as well. I did wanna go over the parades this weekend. I thought it was a great turnout for both parades, and also the fact that the, there was almost no violence, very minor things. Things happened within thousands of people gathering together. But you would, you didn't even hear of any major things happening. And all the community came together, from different communities, came and enjoyed a good time. I drove through the fourth ward yesterday. I mean, it was clean after, you know, they were cleaning. Everyone was just having fun. You can, you would ride through the, every street. You would see people just gathering at a, at a, at different businesses. So that was great for a lot of the businesses that were around the area. So I just wanna say that I'm proud of our community coming together, staying positive, and just having a good day yesterday, and also Saturday as well. I was there downtown. It was, it was a great event. A lot of people came together, a lot of people's efforts came, and I saw it yesterday, so, yesterday and Saturday. So I wanna thank everyone that created these events. Thank you for your hard work and, and an effort to, to, you know, make these, this weekend special for a lot of people. Also, did wanna mention that I did visit CLC with Alderman Jose Guzman, and we met with the Dean Jesus Ruiz. I do wanna invite everyone to go check it out. I mean, it's state of the art. They have a lot of free resources for, for students, and also some residents as well. And also, so that was a great, great, great tour that I had with Jesus, and I invited everyone to go check out CLC. It's amazing. I do wanna say thank you to the police. You know, I talked to Chief Navarro, and, you know, especially with the downtown area, with the Barre area, you know, what they're doing over there is great. Definitely, a lot of work needs to come forward, but we're moving in the right direction. Thank you for the businesses, although sometimes it might not seem that we're listening. We are listening, and we're wanting to put a plan together, and it, that's part of the process. We're putting a plan together to make it easier for, for more customers to come in, and safer, safer environment. I do wanna mention an organization, UMA, UMA Centers, for people that are wanting to look for opportunity to expand their skills, to open opportunity for themselves, whether it be jobs, computer skills, learning Spanish. You know, these things create more opportunity for people to have employment, and they're in their fourth ward. I love what they're doing, so I wanna mention to people to visit UMA Centers, or look them up online. Community of Waukegan, as was mentioned earlier, they do do pop-ups. What a lot of people don't understand with these pop-ups, a lot of these businesses like having these pop-ups happen in their, in their area, because it brings foot traffic, where otherwise, sometimes it'd be very, very slow. So, you know, when you're looking at it, you know, at helping businesses, this, these kind of things do help, do happen. So, you know, it's a good thing that's happening. Community of Waukegan has a event coordinator that coordinates these things. So they're doing a lot of good things for smaller, for the new businesses that have their, their things that they make, and they wanna sell, and for the big businesses to have that foot traffic coming in. So it's, it's a positive, net positive for, for our community. Also, the community of Waukegan has little kids, you know, has little kids making their own events, you know, whether it be an art show, car wash, or whatever, you know, whatever the kids want to do, pageant, or whatever. And it's open for everyone. Doesn't matter who you are, you know, it's open for everyone. That's what this organization is doing, and I'm proud of being a part of it. Also, I did wanna mention, I did wanna ask the mayor, or for the, this upcoming community, the committee as a whole. So we're able to still bring up a few things?
No, that agenda has been set, because that'll be a full agenda. If we wanna do another one in November, December timeframe, we can. But there's enough on that meeting that night that, and our attorneys are massively overwhelmed with the amount of motions that are being done on the council floor. So they need time to prepare, because they are getting behind on things for litigation and everything else, because the amount of stuff that we're spending on this. So it would be an entirely different meeting. The agenda has already been set with the existing things for that October nineteenth committee.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. And for, also for our, maybe George Bridges, for our community, there's a lot of, we're switching over waste management to another company, but also I've been talking to some of the constituents. They're, they're wondering what's gonna happen with the Leafs. I know you went over it with me. But is there any way you can just slightly go over that? Because that's gonna be a major change, and I think a lot of our constituents are gonna be...
Well, that we won't do tonight. There will be things that'll go out to the community, but that's another discussion and not an item for Alderman time. So that, that's something that we can tell you, you know, what...
No, the reason I'm doing this is during my Alderman time, I want my constituents that watch me, that listen to what I'm, to at least have an idea. That's the reason why, not because I wanna be here a little bit longer.
Well, they've got a, they've got a mailing that just went out to them. It's right here.
Mayor, I know, but not a lot of people pay attention to that. That's why, we could have already almost been done. It's a simple thing.
Well, I mean, all we're gonna tell you is what's on the mailing.
Oh, dear Lord.
Alderman, we do not have that information right now.
The dates and times, I do not have that. I just spoke with the Director of Public Works, and they will be putting that out between them and public relations. But it will be leaf pickup with the vax.
It will be with the vax?
It will be with the vax.
Okay, that's, that's a major concern. So people were, they were asking me whether it was gonna be with the vax, or everyone has to put them in bags, and some places where they were...
Couldn't secure that with the, with the vendor. Could not secure the bags this late in the season.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's really one of my concerns. Thank you.
It'll, it'll tell you on here that it's the last week of October through the first week of December. But again, what we've always run into is that could be weather dependent. And then you can always do bags up until December. I think it's December fifteenth that they usually honor.
Thank you. And there's a lot of trees on Run Grand Avenue, so a lot of people now, you know, they'll know that we'll have the vax working. That's it for me today. Thank you, everyone, for listening.
Alderman Newsom? Alderman Turner?
Thank you. All right, so firstly, I want to acknowledge the cameraman for swinging that camera and pointing it at the podium as I've been requesting for many months, and it finally got done. Looked pretty easy, too, so thank you. The parade was awesome. I'm not gonna elaborate on that. I do wanna comment that I was on Genesee late night on Friday night, and it was pretty calm down there. And then I didn't get a chance to go back late night on Saturday, went like nine o'clock Saturday, pretty nice. So no problems that I'm aware of occurred down on Genesee. So no problems that I'm aware of occurred down on Genesee Street. In the sixth ward, we did have a home invasion, uh, before that, excuse me. So since our last meeting, we had both a firefighter and a police officer who were both injured in the line of duty. Fortunately, neither injuries, well, none of the injuries were catastrophic or significant, so both expected to make a full recovery. But I just want to acknowledge the, uh, pain and suffering that these city employees, uh, underwent in the course of their duty. Right, so sixth ward, there was a home invasion, I think it was Thursday morning, 9:30 in the morning approximately. Folks, you gotta keep your doors locked, we don't live in the safe neighborhoods that we moved into years ago. City has changed, society has changed, our neighborhoods have changed. You gotta take precautions and, and lock yourselves, lock your houses and, um, there was also a carjacking. Uh, that was technically in the fourth ward at Grand and Jackson Street, that was at the BP Gas Station, the Lyft driver was carjacked. Again, we, society is not safe and, uh, you know, we've been fortunate here in Waukegan, um, that we don't have the, the level of violent crime that many other larger communities experience. But we do have violent crime and seemingly it is on the increase. I heard what the chief said about vehicle burglaries and, uh, the statistics may be true that the number of burglaries are down and thefts. The fact remains that they are still occurring. And we have had a recent rash of, uh, vehicle burglaries, that's pretty consistent. But more recently, the number of vehicle thefts. Again, protect your properties, lock your vehicles, take your valuables out of the vehicles or don't leave them in plain sight. And, um, just be cognizant of those challenges. Lastly, uh, no, second to lastly, so the alderman and mayor were talking about this new, uh, waste management company that's called LR, LRS. And they sent the mailing in the ward to bill, the mayor mentioned that. They have not sent, but they will be sending very soon a pamphlet to everyone's, every household is going to get the pamphlet. It will detail what the services are as well as contact information for, for, uh, LS, LRS, LRS recycling, right? And then lastly, uh, I'm scheduling a sixth ward meeting tentatively for Thursday, August, or October 5th. Uh, haven't decided yet if that's going to be virtual or I'm probably going to host it in a restaurant. But October 5th, 7:00 PM, details will follow. That's it and that's all, thank you, have a good night.
Alderman Donaworth.
Okay, I hope I don't break the camera now that you put it on me. But, uh, I wanted to thank everybody who has, who has called me, I've been getting calls every day for things that are going on in, in the neighborhood and things we're able to, to take care of. Thank God, a lot of them we're able to take care of. And, uh, dealing with staff has just been phenomenal. It's a, it's a quick shot in the morning and 10 minutes later, I've got my answer. So again, I want to thank you very much. And again, I attended the parade yesterday and man, was it so nice from Jackson Street all the way downtown. It was lined, people, you know, three, four, five deep on Washington cheering and celebrating. And I also went to the after-party, it was just fantastic food, you know, I like that. And, um, had a good time there and I want to thank everybody for, you know, just, just having a great time. And then again, just, just be safe, I mean, keep your eyes open. You know, when you're out there and you see something that doesn't look right, you know, call the police. Or call a neighbor if, you know, you think something's going on at the neighbor's house. But definitely be safe. And thank you very much, I'm done.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to, um, reiterate what the mayor said about the Harbor Fest coming up this Sunday from 12 to 4 down at the harbor. Um, we're going to have, um, Blues Family Robinson from 12 to 2 and Judson Brown Band Duo, not sure what they call themselves to be honest, Judson Brown from 2 to 4. Um, and then there's going to be about a dozen food trucks in the parking lot near, um, the Yacht Club. So it should be a really nice way to kind of say goodbye to summer, hopefully the weather cooperates with us. Hope to see a lot of you there. I'm also having a ward meeting on October 28th, 6:00 PM at McCall School. We're going to be discussing the revenue allocation, um, regarding the money we're getting from the casino and the marijuana taxes and what our obligations are. And the fact that we have this many needs and this much money and, and we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do about that. So, um, we'd like to have the input of our, um, residents on that. So hopefully you can attend the meeting, um, and, um, have your, give your input on what we should, what we should do with the revenue coming in. I wanted to talk a little bit about the article that was in the newspaper over the weekend. Tonight's been a little bit better, it's only 9:30, we, we haven't been here to hearing ourselves talk for very long. I do think we should consider changing or creating rules around alderman time. The county board only gets five minutes when they speak at the end of their meeting. We only give our audience members three minutes. And some of us up here the last time talked for 40 minutes, people, 40 minutes. How is it fair that we get to speak for 40 minutes about whatever the hell it is we want to talk about and they get three minutes when they speak? How is what we say so much more important than what they have to say? So I just think it's something we should consider in respect for ourselves, for each other, for the people who are here. Some of these people have been here since eight o'clock this morning. It's just something I think that we should, we should consider doing out of respect for our community and, and for the process. We, we look unprepared, we looked unprofessional, we've, I, I just think a lot of the questions that get asked can be asked ahead of time or after the fact. We don't need to be up here reiterating the same things over and over, so, thank you.
Alderman. Alderman Bolton. Alderman Bolton, before we go on, you, um, Alderman Florian, did you say your, um, meeting was October? I thought it was September 20.
I'm sorry, it's September.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, okay.
Please do clarify, Ned, though, the meeting is September 28th, next Thursday.
Alderman Bolton.
I'd just like to start off by saying thank you to every department for all the hard work that you do. Putting together reports, meeting, and even taking time with us as our council. Uh, anytime I have something to ask, you make yourself available and I really want to say thank you. Oh, uh, yes, I, and then also, you know, I get a lot of calls, um, from my constituents on events. I want to say thank you for showing your concern. And then also, when, anytime that, any, I hear sirens or anything going on or I get reports, I try to show up on the scene. Even at late crazy hours, oh, I'm coming from one event to another, I'm there on the scene. And, you know, this weekend, we found a woman laying in the grass, you know, the paramedics showed up, we're hearing shootings. I try to be cautiously showing up. I'm that there at every place, every time or everywhere. But, you know, I really want to thank you all, I watch how you handle these cases and I want to say thank you for looking out for us as a community. And so I'd also want to acknowledge Trinity AME for now becoming, after 119 years of historical marking. And then being mindful as it also is, we have acknowledged, this is diaper month. I know it is, what it is to work with children and I have seen a lot of neglect. So don't forget to donate your diapers, the diapers. And so, and speaking in reference to what's going on in the first ward, uh, at Carmen School, I'm working with a few other, um, community churches and volunteers that are volunteering at Carmen Buckner. And they have a homework from kindergarten to fifth grade. And so on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, we are assisting the children with their homework as well as providing activities. So if you want more information about that, feel free to contact the school. In addition to that, while I was there, uh, they have what is called become a parent mentor. It says, are you looking for a way to make a difference in the child's, in the school? Join our growing network of over 1,660 parent members supporting 3, 33,123 students at 225 schools. Now, the issue is to promote, um, motivate some participants, they are willing to pay you for being a mentor. Now, that's really awesome. Plus they have other incentive workshops, certifications and things of that sort. So I'm going to give you a number, it's 224-637-0079. The number again is 224-637-0079. And the contact person is, um, Maria Gualelupe, okay? In addition to that, also in the community, they have a program that's called Girls and Boys of Character. If you want to give, once again, give back and be in the community, it's at the location, I'm, I'm in someone else's ward, but it's at 218 North County. And if you want, uh, you know, someone that needs therapy, also assistance with homework, uh, support groups and things of that sort, feel free to be at that particular address, 218 North County. And if you want further information, feel free to give me a call at 224-607-8445. I think that's all I have, thank you so much.
Um, before I make a motion to adjourn, I do want to point out, um, something that Alderman Felix said. Is this flyer, you should have it by now, but if you haven't, look for it. It is in English that they're sending out, so if Alderman can help and get that word out. But one of the things that's going to happen is, right now, when they change your garbage cans, you will get a 95 gallon garbage can and a 65 gallon recycling bin. You do have the option of getting a 95 gallon, um, recycling bin, which is what you're currently getting through waste management. You can ask for that, um, and you have a number on this flyer to call to ask for it. But you must do it by October 18th or otherwise they will deliver what, the, the 65 gallon recyclable and the 95 gallon, uh, garbage can. So please, um, look at this when you get it, but October 18th is the magical date to make that decision or you will get, uh, a 65 gallon recycling bin.
Is there extra cost for the larger, uh, recycling bin?
Um, no, you just have to ask for it.
Great, thank you.
And I will say, 65 gallons sounds very large. I am a family of two and I have requested the 95, which is what we currently have because you don't get a lot in a 65 gallon, um, garbage can. So keep that in mind, but that's what the date is, October 18th. So we'll announce it at the next couple of, um, uh, council meetings. And if any of you can put that on your pages, that would be much appreciated. And if you can do it in Spanish, that would be helpful because this is not in Spanish. Um, yes, many of us are going to the IML conference this week, so, um, if some of you have trouble getting ahold of an alderman, please leave them a voicemail, um, or myself because we will be at the IML conference. Yes, Alderman Bolton.
I just want to make, mention of one more thing. Mr. Blanks had mentioned about the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. Uh, so him and I have had a conversation about that and how that is going to be executed. From what I'm understanding, we are in the process of reviewing that. But I definitely validate that it is necessary for us to have that. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge you in that, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Newsome, who's second, did you say it or not? No, okay. Alderman Florian, Alderman Newsome and Alderman Florian, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, have a good evening, everyone.
Everybody's going, where you guys going?